Hey, I got a hammer. It'll fix a shoe. Are we ready? Where's that, um, statement to read? Did Bob give me that? On the agenda thing? Okay.
If you want, I can read it.
It's the 88th. I could get it. I get it.
Thank you.
Welcome to the meeting of the Board of Selectmen of February 8th, 2022. Our chairman, Mr. Forrest, is unavailable tonight, so I'll be chairing the meeting. My name is Mike Stone. I'm the vice chairman. We have to get through a little recit- legal recitation. Then we'll move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. This is to advise that as required by Chapter 30A, Sections 18 through 25 and pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during this state of emergency signed into law on June 16th, 2021. The Yarmouth Board of Selectmen will hold a public meeting on Tuesday, February 8th, 2022 at 6:00 PM in the Hearing Room, Town Hall, 1146 through 28 South Yarmouth, Mass. 02664. The public is welcome to attend either in person or via the alternative public access provided below. Is that all I have to read?
Yes.
That's it?
You see that?
Just this part? Do I have to do this too? Okay, let me just check. Yeah, I did. Okay, we're good. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice as our Okay, the first order of business is public comment. If anyone wants to be recognized. Vida.
I just want to, since it happens to be on the agenda for tonight, the town council matter. You know, if there is one town that really should be looking for new town council, it's Dennis because of, you know, the poor advice that they got from the KP people who are one of the candidates to replace our current town council. And, but then they, actually, I think somebody woke up over there in Dennis and they decided that they could possibly get those legal fees from the town of Yarmouth by deducting their share of the feasibility study of costs from, you know, what they were, what they owed the town of Yarmouth. Fortunately, it was voted down, but I think it was an interesting idea. Somebody obviously woke up and, and they still, they still took us for $14,000 for no reason whatsoever, except the fact that this board decided to cave and say, well, we need to play nicely, nicely with Dennis or whatever, especially Dennis, I guess. So I just hope that, but the main thing I really wanted to say tonight is, I don't understand, is there a new definition for conflict of interest? Because to me, this whole exercise, the two outside council that are being considered, I mean, just have such horrendous conflict of interest involved here. But when you consider that one, the KP people are the council for the town of Dennis, and then the other firm is the council for the school district. When we have this kind of a situation with the regional school district and everything, I just don't understand why that didn't seem to you to be a disqualifying situation for those two law firms that you chose to look into and waste everyone's time with it.
Anyone else?
Joe Glenn has his hand up from.
Okay, we'll go to Joe and then we'll go to this lady in the front. Joe, can you hear us?
Hi, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Well, first of all, I'm Joe Glenn from the Fighting Precinct 6. And, Mr. Chair, you'll be happy to know that I didn't get a big head at your reluctant acknowledgement of a good point by me because I very rarely make good points, so I was happy to.
I was about to retract that, Joe, but.
I was, I was, I was about to say that I very rarely make a good point, so if anybody acknowledges it in any way. But talking about damning with faint praise, I think you hit the nail on the head. But I bring to you tidings of great joy, I believe. I think it's a new day and a new dawn in era here in Dennis and Yarmouth. I don't know what members got to see the school committee meeting last night, but I think you will be present pleasantly surprised. I preface, as always, my comments are, I am speaking as Joe Glenn, but I believe I can quote myself at the school committee meetings. So last night, and I sent the budget slides to Tracy in case any of you didn't get to see the meeting or you don't get to see the replay. But I think the Board of Selectmen will be pleasantly surprised at the initial school budget. As we know, some things change. We did get the cherry sheets from the state. And because of some of those formula things that a lot of us have been talking about, we got some reevaluation on the thresholds, the income thresholds of some of our high need students. And so it made the percentage of assessment, the budget assessment for Yarmouth and Dennis to be very good. Normally, we, you know, we always try to level fund it and, and get to two and a half, you know, under two and a half percent. So there's no overrides and often Yarmouth has to have an override. Well, I think this year we're gonna make it because the, we will approve the final school committee budget at our next meeting, 2/28/22. But the final budget will be that Dennis will be at 2.48 and Yarmouth will be, hold your seats, 1.3. Not six, not seven, not five, but 1.3. So I think that's something that you can work with and you can be pleasantly surprised and the community can be surprised. I said at the meeting last night that the old saying, it's better to be lucky than good. In this case, I think we were lucky and good. We put together a good budget and our new financial superintendent for finance, David Flynn, has done a great job. And to that end, because I really am sincere about, and I've been critical about communications, but I don't want to just be critical about it. I want it, it's a two-way street. And so I want to communicate this with you and to the community. So to that end, you were concerned and I had been concerned about the capital budget money and the capital budget plan getting to you. And Mr. Flynn had thought that he had got everything to you. I don't know if it was just lost in the communications or a few days behind, but he believes now, and I believe now, that you guys, that the town has, and the town administrator and the assistant town administrator has that numbers. But feel free to contact him or me or the committee if it's not up to speed because I, I believe that that capital budget is very important. So thank you for your time. I appreciate it. Thanks for the, for the compliment, Mike. I'll take it wherever it can go.
I thank you, Joe. Appreciate the update. Do we have a water, another update? Good evening.
Hello, my name's Laura Rosala. I'm the Water and Wastewater Superintendent here in Yarmouth. I just wanted to give the board and anyone listening at home a quick update on PFAS at well number 10. All of our customers should have received a postcard in the mail over the weekend from the Yarmouth Water Department indicating that well number 10 had a PFAS exceedance of the MCL or the maximum contaminant level in the fourth quarter of 2021. The postcard provided a link and a QR code to get our customers to the full notice, which is on the town website. But if that, that notice is very similar to the one that everyone received back in November for PFAS at well number four and five. So the main thing I just wanted to make our customers aware of is that wells number four, five, and 10 are all offline right now. We're be able to meet our needs with the other 20 drinking water wells that we have in town. And all of those wells are also being tested for PFAS and are all below the MCL. So the water is safe to drink. That's, I've gotten a lot of phone calls over the last couple of days and that's the main question, is the water safe to drink? It's fine the way it is. Don't need to boil it. You can drink the water as is. We have those wells off. I also just wanted to let customers know, if you have any other questions or concerns, you can always call me at the Water Department. The phone number is on the postcard. And if there's any questions from the board or anyone in the audience right now, I'd be happy to take those as well.
Tracy?
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
I'm just, well, one of them is to the town administrator, when this kind of stuff goes out, it'd be helpful if we received a copy of it because obviously people were concerned and talking about it. I had no idea what they were talking about. Was well number 10 offline during the fourth quarter?
No, it was.
It was online, so they potentially could have had it in the water stream at that point, but just no longer.
Correct. Yep. And the other important thing to remember is all of our wells mix in the system. So most, no one's really getting just that water from that well. It all mixes. So to make anyone feel a little bit better, it is mixing with wells with lower levels. So overall, the water is, was never too high.
Well, I'm really glad that we're testing. I think we, as a board, really need to start to, to talk about the source. And, you know, I mean, now we're three in a year. Granted, we have a very good water structure, water system that's duplicit and we have the ability to shut them off. But this is really emerging and I think we need to really get ahead of it.
Yeah, the other things to just keep in mind, we've only started testing for PFAS in April of 2021. So that's why it's all kind of coming up now.
Right, and we're not alone in that. I think people should also know that there's a lot of other communities on the Cape that are dealing with the same issue. But again, if it's there, we need to, we need to work to address it. And it's not, it's an easily removable product, so. But thank you very much.
I have another question. You were saying that nobody gets just the water from one well. Is that correct?
Right.
So explain how that works for the benefit of the public with all these wells pumping at full capacity. You said with the four that are down, there's 20, how many?
We have 24 total and right now four.
24 operating now?
20 are operating.
20, all right, 24. So can you explain to the, the public, even when those wells were operating, exactly how that was functioning in the totality of the water system?
Sure, so when we run the wells right now, all of the wells run at the same time. So they're all pushing into the same system. We're all on one service zone, so it all mixes. It all goes towards our drinking, our tanks and then mixes and then comes back to the system. So if you're right next to a well, you will get more from that well than the other wells, but you'll also, it'll also still be mixing with every other well in the system.
So whatever that concentration is, most likely there'll be some dilution before it goes to a particular property, right?
And for the exceedance for well number 10, the level was 23 parts per trillion. The limit is 20 parts per trillion, so we're just over the limit. So any level of mixing would have helped bring that right down.
That's another good point is the degree to which a well is over the limit.
Right, yeah, we're just.
Is what's significant, really, right?
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Yeah, just briefly.
Dan?
Along with Tracy, I hope that we can put this on as an agenda item because talking about it briefly like this doesn't seem to give it the attention it's due. I'm curious, what is the plan as far as mitigating the damage to these wells and getting them back online?
So right now, we're still in the process of determining what our next steps are gonna be. There's various options. We could just leave them off potentially if we can meet our demands. We could do full treatment plant, which would be millions of dollars. And then there are some options for seasonal treatment because we really would only need them in the summer for a potentially less expensive seasonal treatment system that wouldn't be winterized, wouldn't be in a building, that type of thing. So we're still looking at our options. And then interconnections with other towns are also a potential option.
Do you have a timeframe in mind in terms of decision making?
Yes, so we, the exceedance meant that DEP is involved and they're requiring that we have this capital, the corrective action plan by March 22nd, I think is the date that we have to have that submitted. So we'll have some kind of plan in the next month or so.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
A gentleman has a question or is it a comment?
It's a question and a comment.
Why don't you, why don't you take one of the microphones so everybody can hear? Because if you just talk to her, neither us nor the public in, out, in, that is watching are gonna be able to hear you. Thank you.
George Lama, 14 Lake Lanav. So I have a question on the statistics. When you looked at the, when I looked at the reports, there, there was the first measurement was at 14. The next was at 17. A numbers person, that seems to indicate there may be an upward trend here. So what's the policy for, you know, if you see an upward trend, do you take it offline and wait to see if it goes up again? So that's the question is, are we just going from testing to testing and not paying attention to a trend?
I would say in the future, we could look to follow trends. We only have the, like, nine months' worth of data at this point. We don't have a lot of data to go on. This one has gone up. We had one other that has gone down. So we haven't seen consistent trends. We are still monitoring that well while it's offline, so we'll continue to watch which direction it's going. If it goes back down, you know, we might be in better shape. We're not sure. If it keeps going up, we'll definitely need to do something.
So I would suggest that, you know, to err on the side of caution. If you see an upward trend, shut it down. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Laurie, it's, it's my understanding that the EPA does not have a, a level that's safe for PFAS. Is that correct?
Right, there's no federal limit on PFAS. They do have a health advisory on two of the PFAS. I think it's PFO and PFOS. They have a health advisory, but they don't have any standards. Massachusetts and I think it's, there's only three or four other states that actually regulate PFAS.
You said there was somebody?
Yeah, Tom. I'm Nick Nellano. He may have his own public comment.
Tom, are you asking to come in? I don't see anything. Here he is.
Yes, good evening. Thank you very much, Mr. Stone. Welcome, select board members. In your package tonight, you will see a, a document pertaining to the St. Patrick's State Parade. And we'll hopefully, you, you folks will give us the permission to go ahead and liven up the town on that day, as I may say. And just so, I'd like to give you a little grand marshal tidbit. We have the USS Constitution Commander, Billy J. Farrell, who will be with us marching down Route 28. As you all know, or maybe you don't know, she'll be the first woman commander in, on that vessel, which is the only, only, only vessel from, you know, the oldest vessel in recognition. And also it has a tie to the Cape Cod, Mr. Chairman, that back in the 1800s, from West Barnstable, we had a commander in charge of that vessel that took it around the world only once on a 52,000 mile voyage. And he is buried in, in West Barnstable. So we have had previous commanders on that vessel. And I just wanted to make that point. So thank you very much and looking forward to meeting.
Tom, I just want to say you liven up this town every day.
Well, thank you, Ms. Post. And hopefully in November, you'll make us, our town more historic. So thank you so much.
Tom, this is Peter Smith. Also, one of the gunners in the War of 1812 was buried in Orleans.
Yes, another wonderful tie that Cape Cod, you know, Cape Cod has great history with mariners. And this is another piece of it, just like that piece on, on Route 6A. So, well, thank you very much and hope you all attend. You're all invited. As you know, it's a Cape Cod parade, so make sure all your other boards of Selectmen on other towns are aware. That would be great to have a nice weather day. It's not gonna be like September, but it's gonna be great. I can feel already, so thank you.
All right, thank you, Tom.
Just a passing note to make sure there's plenty of candy. I can't stress enough.
I know.
You have no idea how, how much people dislike us when we have no candy.
Without candy, you're dog meat.
Nothing. You're nothing.
That's it. Okay.
You might as well just sit down.
Anyone else on public comment? No? Okay. So moving on to a COVID-19 update with Bruce Murphy, our Health Director.
Good evening. Bruce Murphy, Director of Health. Also with us tonight, I believe I have a couple Board of Health members that will be available. Mary Craig, our Vice Chairman, will be available. And I believe there may be one or two others coming in. So just like to, this is, we're getting a PowerPoint. I'll keep getting it refined, so I think that's helpful for the public. Working with the Assistant Town Administrator, Bill Scott. We're hoping to get it up online, so the links that we go forward can be live links, so people can just click on to get even more information. So I got the, I got the controls. Thank you. The notes in this document are updated on a regular basis, so they just have to make, people have to make sure they get the most updated one by looking at the, the date on the opening slide. The cases are coming down. That's the good news. We are now down to only 45 active cases townwide. So that's the good news overall. And that's important. We can see when that is continuing to come down the last several days. As we can see, the numbers really took off from November, December to January. And now it's dropping faster than it, than it went, than it went up. We can see that in the graph right here. I'm just gonna kind of go towards the end of the graph, the fourth wave, the delta when that came on in August and September. We can see it hit Omicron and then went right up to the fifth wave where we had 272 active cases in town. And since then, we can see how steeply it's dropped off, decreased. And then as of yesterday, there was only, as mentioned earlier, 45 active cases of yesterday. So that's, that's important. And yesterday, there was only two cases reported to us. So we're continuing to see less cases where we used to get 40 or 50 a week reported. Then it dropped down to 30, then down to 20. And the last 10 days, it's been in the middle teens, except for two yesterday, then we had two on Friday. So, you know, it's definitely a great trend that we're watching. We know there's more test kits out there because this does not include the home test kits. This is the people that go to testing sites. But still, very good news of the steep decrease. Positivity rate was based on numbers from over a period of January 16th to 29th, which was a period that we still had considerable number of cases reported to us daily in that 30 daily group. So that's why pretty much all the Cape towns are still high. Even though they're all lower, 14 of the 15 towns had lower readings. Only Brewster was the same as no, no, no change. The positivity rates came down in all the towns and you're gonna see even probably a more dramatic decrease when the results come out Wednesday, Thursday. Hospitalizations following the same trend. We're seeing the hospitalization rates in both hospitals decreasing in both COVID beds within the hospital and within ICU. So another good indication that we're heading in the right direction. Vaccination status. We can see the, the percent of populations and where we sit at 77% of our population is fully vaccinated with two shots or one J and J. So we know where Province Town is high at 128. People are just listing that as their address. It doesn't really get cross-referenced in with the clerk's office. So a lot of people are just listing that as their address. Most reports will say 95 or greater. They don't usually go over that number, so we might do that also. So we've stayed at 77% probably for the last two weeks, three weeks. It takes a good number for us to go up a number, but, you know, we are still getting people vaccinated. Booster shots, we're still, we're at 44%. That number's also kind of lagged behind a little bit. So we're looking for, obviously, more people to get vaccinated. We do have some good range of vaccinations in the age group from 65 to 75 and older. They're probably in the 70% vaccinated. It's the younger group between the 16 to, let's say, 50 age group that are probably waiting to get their booster shots or moving towards that. Massachusetts has a website that people can click on this link once we go up live with it and for a lot more information from the state that would be available as people look to go forward. Access to vaccination records, I'd mentioned this at our last updates also, that if people are looking to find out if they can't find their vaccination card or want to put it on their phone, they can, they can go to this site. For vaccinations, continuing, County Health Department, every Wednesday. Be tomorrow. I'm sure people can just walk in tomorrow if they wish to go down. 10 to, 10 to 4 at the County Complex on Route 6A in Barnstable Village. You can also get on the website to register and that's for all vaccinations and children. Cape Cod Hospital is continuing vaccinations Monday through Saturday, 8 to 6, and you can call that number there for an appointment and that's also very quickly to get an appointment. Again, these numbers will be available up on our website for, for the public to look at further. Vaccination clinics are continuing. Vaccination clinics are continuing at Cape Cod Community College. State-funded, January, they operated vaccination clinics three days a week at the college. That was extended for the month of February. So again, you can go to this website and get an appointment very quickly. Vaccinations of local businesses, CVS Stop and Shop on Long Pond that has a pharmacy in Walgreens, again, offering vaccinations, again, very quickly. You can check out their website. We're, the Health Department of both Yarmouth and Dennis are working with the, the school system and going to have a vaccination up at the high school next Thursday for students, their parents and administration. So we're reaching again out to the, the children in the school. We had one earlier at Mattie Keys, probably a month and a half ago, two months ago. So we're offering a, another clinic at the high school. Bass River Pediatrics also offers a vaccination clinic on Saturdays. They've been very active for vaccination of their patients, and they've been very active with that. So and when I say very active, they've had some sadities where they've had 60, 70 people come through. So just not Yarmouth, but other, other towns also. So they're staying, they're staying active also with that. Testing, again, we have the testing at the Cape Cod Melody Tent. Three days a week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. You can see the, the various times they have. And again, that's walk-ins available, walk-in, drive-in. You can just go right down there and get that done. Urgent Hospital and Urgent Cares by appointments. Call in the hospital. I know they have very quickly to get people in. And you can also go through their website. United States Postal Service had sent out the free kits to the families. And I think people have already registered. I think some people might have already received them. I know I've talked to a few people, and I think they've already received them at home. So check your mail and don't let them stay in the mailbox overnight. So they should be coming. And if you haven't signed up for them, you can check the website. And thanks to Selectmen Post, we were able to put the phone number up there. Thank you. Take-home kits that we're working with in town to distribute through Mary Wagon, Community Development. And we finished Phase 1, where we distributed 500 kits to 223 households. In December, we able to get them out before, before Christmas. We're ready to go into Phase 2 now, which start, which is starting now. We, money was available that Mary was able to use from the CARES Act in town, was able to carry that over to purchase the kits. We purchased an additional now 4,660 kits. One kit per person, and there's two tests in the kit. And this distribution starts, is free to Yarmouth residents, must qualify by low to moderate income. She'll have a chart there, but it depends on obviously the size of the family. It's also going to be available to seniors, disabled, homebound. People in urgent needs, symptomatic, exposed or at risk. So it's going to be a, it's going to cover a very wide range for people to come in. So that starts tomorrow at Town Hall here. 11 to 4. And then all Thursday, and then it'll start up next, next week, Monday through Friday, as the supply lasts. Again, they'll be available at Town Hall by just coming right in here. Mary will be set up right here now, I believe, right in the hearing room here, as she had before. So that starts tomorrow, Town Hall. And also, it starts tomorrow at the Senior Center. As they partnered with Mary in town last time we did it. So 9 to 3 at the Senior Center, starting tomorrow through Friday. And then they'll start also next week, Monday through Friday, at the Senior Center. So people have two opportunities, two locations to pick up their free test kits. If you can't make it, Mary has worked graciously to put her cell phone number out there. And for people that are working and can't make it here during that time period, they can call her and she'll arrange a time to be here. And if anybody is symptomatic or have symptoms, they can call and we'll get the kit outside to them. We don't really want them walking in saying, I need a test kit to see if I'm not feeling well. Of course, on the, on the flip side, if you're not really feeling well, you probably might have it. So but we can check, come in and get your kit, but call Mary ahead of time. So she's been, as I said, gracious on that. Board of Health, as I kind of end towards the end of the slides, had issued a mask advisory in, in August. They followed that up with a mask mandate in November for indoor public meeting areas as of tonight. And then they also further stressed their mask advisory indoors on December 7. So the Board of Health has been monitoring the positivity rates and vaccination rates in town and determined if any other steps will be, need to be taken. The Board of Health last night stressed a advisory for vaccination, encouraging, encouraging and urging people to continue their vaccination and get their booster shots. We just put some headlines in the news. I've shown you this before. So I know people at home might be interested. But as we can see, in November 11th, there was 39 cases reported. And then towards the end of November, it was starting to increase. We get into December, and we see at the end of December and 30th, there was 1,800 cases on the Cape. I get back in, in November, we're at the 30s. Now we're reaching back to that. So hopefully, we're getting back to that November days. Then we get into January, we see the cases kick up to 4,500 new cases. So we can see how steeply the cases increased. What we've added is some frequently asked questions. We get a lot of questions either at the meeting here or called in. These are taken from the Mass Department of Public Health website. There's the link at the bottom. There's a lot more questions under the Q and A. So we just tried to bring a few out, the people that have been calling us. I'm not going to read them all, but a couple points of interest that, that we've heard is the first one is getting a vaccination negative impact, the person's immigration status. The answer was no. It goes into that. Second question was, should people who have had COVID-19 been vac, be vaccinated? Yes, because you're not sure how long your immunities will, will hold up. So we tried to hit some of the high points of the, the Q and A that will be available for the public to look at. And they'll again be available with a hot link on, on the website. The end one is, well, getting the vaccine make me sick? No, it's a, it's not a live virus. Some people do have some side effects. What should I do if I experience symptoms after receiving COVID? And the first one is, you know, check with your doctor. Because it's not uncommon to have some slight side effects for a day. But if they continue or they seem more severe, severe, you would want to call your doctor or check in with the, the hospital. I end up with the, the slide right there and just noticing how drastically that decline drops over the last, over the last week. So that's the overall presentation. I think the highlight tonight was the, the cases dropping drastically. And the free test that will be available at Town Hall and the Senior Center starting tomorrow.
Okay, thank you very much, Bruce. Does anybody in the board have any questions before we move on?
No, for me. Thank you.
Tracy?
Thank you.
No, thank you.
I, I, I just had a question. With the 77% that you say is vaccinated, again, I just want to be clear on this. If somebody has one vaccination shot of the recommended two, are they, are they included in that 77%?
Yes.
So it's really not people who are fully vaccinated. It's people who have had some vaccination?
No, fully vaccination would be considered if you had two shots of Moderna or Pfizer or one shot of J and J.
Correct.
That would be fully vaccinated.
But I'm, I'm not talking about J and J, because I understand that's one shot. But if somebody has one shot of Moderna or one shot of Pfizer, are they included in there?
Right, they're not considered fully vaccinated.
Okay.
That group that have only had one shot and hasn't moved on is at 88%. So we have a number of people at 88% that haven't picked up their second shot. And we're only at 77%. So that's why we're encouraging
Okay.
the vaccination.
Once they get that second shot, that
We should
number should go up significantly.
Correct.
All right. Now, on the on the booster shot, this between the 77 and 44%, that's quite a, that's quite a deviation. Do you have any ideas why there's such a discrepancy there? You would think that people that are committed enough to get fully vaccinated would be eager to get that booster shot.
Agreed. And I think they're the ones that are still moving along, you know, waiting to get their second shot and then to get their booster shot. So hopefully, that's the direction they're moving. I mean, the booster shots, you know, have been out there for a couple of months now. So I think people are still going in that direction. Like I said, the, the higher age group are doing real well. And I think as we see that middle age group continuing to move forward, we'll see the boosters increase.
That would be an interesting parallel to watch, those two categories. To see if, if that transpires when, as they get that second shot, whether that number of, of people who have had the booster shot raises significantly.
Yes.
Because there's, there's quite a gap there right now. All right, anyone else? No? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
So I'm interested, what will it take for the Board of Health to rescind their current advisory mandate, mandate, or whatever you're calling it about the masks? Because apparently you didn't even discuss that on, yesterday, did you?
At the Board of Health meeting, they, they did not discuss that, to discuss their advisory recommending people to get vaccinated. Their position right now is the mask mandate within town meeting rooms should, should remain. They're continuing to monitoring the positivity and vaccination rates, and then we'll make a determination at each of their meetings.
I mean, in view of that precipitous draft, that's why I'm asking you, what is it going to take?
Well, I, I think what he's saying is that even though there's a, as you would call it precipitous drop, there's still a lot of cases. He, he, it's trending down very quickly.
Correct.
But there's still a lot of infectious cases out there.
Correct.
No, there aren't. I mean, he just said 45.
45 townwide that we're aware of, but there's probably more than that because people
Because a lot of the people are home testing.
So until we feel a little bit more comfortable, the board wanted to keep that mask in public areas.
I, I don't want to repeat the question again. I mean,
No, in, in any event, I think it's more of an appropriate question to go, to ask the Board of Health at one of their hearings.
Well, he's a representative of the Board.
Yeah, but he's not the Board of Health.
I mean, you know.
Just like we have a, we have a town administrator, but he's not the Board of Selectmen, so.
Okay, and I, I just want
They have different functions.
All right, I, I want to make a comment about this the questions that have come up and, and your answer to somebody who had been ill with COVID, whether to be vaccinated or not. I think you have to be very careful about telling them categorically, yes, take it. Because there have been cases where people literally have died. When they had, had, they had been sick with the COVID, had acquired the natural immunity at a very high level. And the, the vaccination just caused very serious issues, and in some cases, death.
Thank you very much, Bruce.
Thank you.
We're going to go to a vision plan presentation.
Somebody from the Board of Health that has their hand up on this?
Somebody from the Board of Health?
Our Board of Health Chairman, Vice Chairman.
Yes, hello. This is Mary Craig. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, certainly. I, I just wanted to comment that the United States has fallen way behind in booster administration. So it's, it's not just our town, but it's a phenomenon across the country. Since December 1st, when Omicron first started to be noticed, it, we've had 63% more Americans killed more than any other large wealthy country. So the, the boosters are incredibly important. But for some reason, like Bruce said, we're, we're not sure. It could be a lag in time in terms of the vaccination. But we also talked about at the meeting that there is just a large amount of COVID fatigue out there. And people just saying, I got vaccinated. I'm just not going to do anything more. You know, just like Nita was saying, people are tired of wearing the masks. But these are still very important measures that we need to continue.
Yeah, and it's not only the people that are getting tired, but a lot of the parents are, are going through that same thing with the children in the schools. I listened on the radio to debate about kids not being able to talk during lunch, coming home with these kind of disgusting masks at the end of the day. So there's fatigue at, at every level. And I, and I don't think there's many people that don't experience that. I mean, I, I get fed up with it too. Everybody does. But on the other hand, you know, stamina comes into play if you, if, if you really want to do something about this virus. So you got a lot of people watching it. You have a lot of scientists weighing in. You have a lot of physicians weighing in. And for what it's worth, I follow the science rather than the folklore or people that don't have the medical backgrounds. I listen to the professionals.
Good.
So. Anything else, Mary?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much. Okay. So we're going to go to the vision plan presentation. And I think we're going to also talk briefly about some planning articles for the warrant for the annual town meeting.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for having us here tonight. Members of the Board, Mr. Rittenhour and Mr. Scott. I'm Joyne Crowley. I'm Chair of the Planning Board. And I don't know if I'm joined by any other Planning Board members tonight. I don't think I am. So tonight, we'll present the vision plan that we transmitted to you on December 30th, December 30th, 2021. I'd like to start by extending greetings to any members of the public who may be joining us now and others who may view this presentation later, this recorded presentation later. I'd also like to begin by offering thanks to the Planning Board publicly for their tireless commitment to this effort. This was a big deal. And, and, and all of the members of the Board jumped in and committed time and effort to this, to this, to this planning, important planning effort. And, and I'd also like to add special thanks to the members of the Yarmouth Community. The residents, the visitors, the employers, the business owners, town employees, neighborhood and civic associations, all who participated in this community visioning project. This plan may be presented by us tonight, but it has been authored and, and, and shaped by many along the way. Of course, super special thanks goes to Kathy Williams, our Town Planner, who will be making this Yarmouth Vision Plan presentation for you this evening.
Take off my mask while I talk. I concur with Joanne. Great appreciation to everyone who helped contribute to this vision plan. It wouldn't have been possible without our community's heavy effort and, and continued effort throughout the entire process, which was really nice to see. So what, what's the purpose we're trying to do here? We really tried to create a vision plan that kind of identified what's really important to our community and what we want to see in Yarmouth's future. And also develop some general goals that are going to help us reach that vision. Ultimately, this is going to serve as a great foundation for updating our local comprehensive plan as well as a resource for you guys as you move forward with your own goal setting and resource allocations for the community. We had a very robust public participation process. We had initially three workshops, a business roundtable, and an initial survey that had 470 responses. We then developed a draft vision plan with the goals, embedded that through a second survey, which received 920 responses. So we were going in the right direction. And then ultimately, when we had the vision plan draft, we had a public And then ultimately, when we had the vision plan draft, we had a public comment period for three weeks and a presentation to the planning, from the Planning Board on December first, and we received eleven comments to that. So what you'll see in here is the vision plan was developed with a primary vision plan, or vision statement, excuse me, as a great place to live, work, play, and learn. And then we developed general goals under the eleven different topics, items that you see there that I'll go into more detail as we go through the presentation. So what was our general overall vision is our community is really looking for that great place to live, work, play, and learn. And we envision our town as really being attractive, affordable, inclusive, a place that values the importance of clean, healthy environment, a strong economy, diverse business interests, abundant places for great fun and leisure and socialization, and educational excellence. So under each of these live, work, play, and learn, we defined a little bit more detailed visions. So it was a great place to live. Yarmouth is a town that really protects all those great natural resources that we love so much, really has that strong community, sense of community, and fosters that belonging amongst our members. Is aesthetically pleasing, you know, we want to make sure that our community is attractive in our residential, commercial, and historic districts. We want to be sure that we're offering quality housing and housing services for everyone. We want a, a nice, safe place for us to live with good municipal services and facilities and infrastructure. We want to be a community that cares about our vulnerable members and communicates effectively and transparently. We also want to be sure that we're offering robust senior services and facilities for our older residents and active seniors. We want to be sure that we are protecting our environment and ecosystems by minimizing adverse impacts. We want to do that through planning, mitigation, and emergency preparedness. As a great place to work, Yarmouth is a town that has a big one here, year-round thriving economy with a variety of quality employment opportunities and businesses. We want to be sure that we're supporting our strong hospitality and tourism section, sectors. We're promoting economic development. We want to be sure that we're taking into consideration other factors like the environment and infrastructure impacts. We want to be sure that we're business friendly and having a business-friendly approach with our businesses, but also taking into consideration community goals and interests. And we want to be sure that we're maintaining safe and accessible roadway sidewalks, bikeways, and public transit services. As a great place to play, we want to have a place that has a lot of comprehensive year-round recreational entertainment programs for all ages, opportunities for people to socialize with civic clubs, volunteerism, and all the great community events that we have. And also offers ample public access to a variety of recreation, like the golf courses, the beaches, and the waterways, and all the great natural resources. As a great place to learn, Yarmouth is a town that's really committed to educational excellence and lifelong learning, so for everyone. And also having modernized library facilities that offer a variety of programs. So then we took a look at how could we develop some goals to reach our vision? So what you've identified here is how can we preserve, promote, or provide different aspects in order to reach our vision for the environment? What you have here is we want to be sure that we're preserving our environment, our drinking water, our water resources, our wetlands, our marshlands. We want to make sure that we're preserving our open spaces and all the great beaches and conservation lands that we have. But we also want to try to promote land acquisitions that are gonna actually protect those environmental resources. We want to be careful of where we're placing development, so they're protecting our environment and encouraging redevelopment over new development. Also, the use of native plant and sustainable yards in order to decrease chemicals and water usage that could impact our environment. So we're looking to provide municipal wastewater to help our environment. Also looking at well-maintained open spaces, beaches, and conservation areas. Maintenance was something that came up quite, quite a bit, and you'll see it in, in a few different areas throughout the vision plans. People are really interested in having well-maintained facilities. And also educating people on the proper use of fertilizer and best practices for lawn care. So some of the edits that came from the second survey and also from public comments that we received, really were including protection of wildlife habitat and connectivity, and that really the encouraging redevelopment over any type of new development, promoting the native plant species and, and kind of preserving our woodlands. So what are some of the goals to reach the vision we have for our community character and design? We want to be sure that we're preserving our Cape Cod charm, all that friendly small-town feel and safe neighborhoods that we have, all the great historical buildings and areas, all the traditional events and festivals and parades that we all love to go to here in Yarmouth. We also want to be sure that we're promoting inclusivity and diversity and trying to attract more families to Yarmouth. We want to see if we can expand our community events or festivals and people accessing, looking, and enjoying our historic buildings in sight. We're also interested in growth management, and again, focusing on redevelopment that doesn't overbuild or overcrowd the community. That was something that kind of came up multiple times as well. We're also looking for ways to kind of eliminate and improve any blighted or vacant or nuisance properties. I think we all can see those around town, and we're looking for a way of, of addressing those. And we're looking to provide kind of a focal point or gathering place to help identify, have a, give a sense of identity for our community. And that could be through a town center, a village green, or even enhancing our three existing wonderful and very distinct villages. And then looking at different ways through zoning and design standards that we can improve the aesthetics, especially along our commercial corridors. Some of the changes that came about from the second survey and public comments was really emphasizing that growth management and emphasizing our very three distinct villages. Housing, so what are the goals to reach our, our housing vision? We want to be sure that we are preserving all of our existing year-round housing stock and seeing what we can do to promote an increase in the use of our existing year-round housing stock. Looking to provide for more quality year-round housing for both rental and homeownership, and also more affordable housing that is dispersed throughout the town. And again, that doesn't overcrowd or overtax the environment or, or infrastructure. And looking at more alternatives for addressing seasonal employee housing. The changes that came about from the second survey and public comments was really dispersing the housing throughout the community and more seasonal employee housing, and then also emphasizing and noting housing services as part of our housing vision. Town services, so the goal to meet our vision for town services is preserving a lot of the great things that we have. We have a very strong commitment to public health and safety. It came through very clear in the surveys. And all the great existing services and facilities that the town does provide to our residents. We're looking to promote the reduction in waste and litter. I was a little surprised myself how frequently litter came up in some of the survey comments. And getting more people to participate in, in our local government. And also helping people by collaborating with other different social services providers that oversee substance abuse or food insecurity or mental health issues, kind of helping people get to the right programs for them. We're looking to provide, again, adequate maintenance of municipal buildings and infrastructure and other assets. We want to be sure that we are effectively and efficient government with the tax rate that balances services, facilities, and infrastructure needs through prioritization. That's one thing that came out of some of the public comments is, this, this are all great to have all these things, but we're not gonna be able to afford them all. So how are we gonna keep the tax rate down? We're gonna have to do that through some type of prioritization of where we go. And also effective, timely, and transparent communication with the community, and just easier access to information, especially on the town website was, was, was noted. So how are we meeting the, what goals are we looking forward to reach the vision for our senior and age-friendly services? We want to preserve all the great stuff that we have right now. A lot of shout-outs to the, to the senior center with all the community-centered educational, social programs and activities for seniors that are there. Also looking to promote and enhance accessibility amenities for people with disabilities and more ways to counter community isolation for seniors by having more senior transit options as well. And again, just providing the investment in all the senior, senior facilities and services for our residents because we have such a large demographic of older res, residents. And be sure that we can encourage diverse and multi-generational interactions, especially partnering with the schools. There are a lot of comments about different ways that the schools and senior center can partner and benefit each other. Climate, resiliency, and sustainability. So what are some of the goals to help reach our vision? We want to be sure that we are preserving our environmental health, and that's all that biodiversity and natural ecosystems that we have on Cape Cod. We really want to promote different types of planning, education, and mitigation to address climate change. People are looking to have less waste in plastic and more reuse and recycling, and reductions in energy consumption and mission, vehicle emissions, but also having more energy-efficient and renewable energy sources and roof-mounted solar energy projects throughout town specifically noted. Also looking to provide more public outreach and education on energy conservation, more electrical charging stations throughout town, and also continuing to look for those grant opportunities for energy conservation and climate resiliency projects. So some of the things that came out of the second survey and public comments was really reducing plastic waste and also promoting the roof-mounted energy project, solar projects throughout town, including Old Kings Highway. And then, of course, being sure that we have emergency preparedness and education. The economy, that's a big one. What are some of the goals to help us reach our economic vision? So we want to preserve, again, all the great things that we have, our strong hospitality and tourism industry, and all the great existing year-round businesses that we have and we all, all enjoy. We want to look at different ways we can promote economic growth and diversification to generate better, more quality year-round jobs for people. We want to support all of our great existing businesses and see what we can do to attract new ones. We want to be sure that we can attract and retain year-round and seasonal employees because our businesses don't operate if we don't have the employees for them. Being sure that we're promoting use of local, state, and federal programs and grants in order to incentivize business growth. One example could be the opportunity zone that was designated along Route twenty-eight. Having commercial redevelopment, again, redevelopment to grow our economy and also doing it in a way that improves the aesthetics of our community. And trying to use our existing strengths to curse, encourage business development. Some of our existing strengths, obviously, we have the Cape Cod Hospital and Medical Services nearby. We have the Cape Cod Rail Trail. We have a wonderful mid-Cape location. You can get to a bunch of different places very easily. So taking all of those strengths and seeing what we can do to encourage business development. Also promoting our appeal as a great tourism destination and including maybe some opportunities for educational vacations. We want to be sure that we maintain our family-friendly activities because we really are a premier family-friendly vacation destination on the Cape. And also work on promoting a better working relationship between the government, municipal government, and business community so that we're working more in partnership. And, and last is like providing expanded broadband alternatives, looking at ways that we might be able to make it more efficient to do business in Yarmouth by streamlining perhaps our permitting and licensing procedures. And then again, municipal wastewater. We had it already in the environment, protecting our environment, but it's just as equally important here as economy for the redevelopment along Route twenty-eight. There really wasn't a significant number of changes to the economy section. There was just some, moving some stuff around from the survey. But one thing that came from a public comment is being sure that we preserve our existing year-round businesses. So goals to keep that connectivity and mobility and how we get around town. We want to be sure we're maintaining and preserving all of the great walking paths and trails that people use to get around, having affordable transportation options, including the transit, and keeping up our well-maintained and properly paved roadways that we have. We're also looking to promote more dedicated pedestrian and bicycle areas, whether they're through bike paths and whether we can get some prioritization through our MassDOT projects along Route twenty-eight. And also looking at different ways and opportunities to improve our traffic safety, reduce congestion and speed reduction. I think there's been a lot, there was quite a few comments about people concerned about the speeds on our roads in addition to congestion. So looking for different ways to prove access for people to the regional bus service, which is a great asset for everyone. And provide, we're looking for, looking for different ways to integrate multimodal safely into two specific destination locations. We have some trails now, but want to be sure that we're getting people using these safe bike paths to the places that they actually want to go. So increased connectivity capabilities between existing bike paths, trails, and destination locations, I'm sorry, repeating myself, consistent financial and operational resources. So we can't make this all happen if we don't have the resources in order to do that. There were a few changes based on the second survey related to incorporating roadways, preserving our affordable transportation options, and then continually looking at different ways of improving traffic, traffic safety. So goals to reach our recreational and entertainment vision. We want to preserve all of our wonderful existing recreational programs in the camps, the sailing center, what we have at Flax Pond, all the great existing parks, playgrounds, beaches, golf courses. People couldn't talk enough about how great all these facilities are in addition to all the different conservation areas. And maintaining existing access to the water, access, public access to the water was something that was mentioned many times with boat launches, fishing piers, and, and beaches and all the different small town ways to water that we have. People are looking to promote expanded year-round recreational options, and we obviously have a lot of seasonal recreational options. So maybe doing something more for the off-season, looking for different ways for entertainment for young people. We want to promote having them come, we gotta have something for them to do. And expansion and protection of all the great conservation areas and trails that we have. Again, in the provide, again, well-maintained recreational facilities and conservation trails. We want to improve our water quality because we want to be sure that we're maintaining all this great recreational swimming and boating, fishing, and shell-fishing opportunities that we have. Then looking at ways to expand recreational programs and different entertainment opportunities and community events. The last one was really expanding the recreational facilities and that public access to water. There wasn't a significant number of changes. We had asked in a survey about a community center, and there really wasn't any specific distinct direction for that one way or the other. So we decided to leave it more general with expanding year-round recreational options, provided more access to the public water access, and then also noting golf courses in the vision, public golf courses. Education and learning, our goals are to help preserve the great vocational training that we have at the Cape Cod Regional Technical High School and really all the great different options we have for education, both public, private, and religious institutions here, here in our town. We're looking to promote that balanced working relationship with our regional educational partners in Dennis. Based on the good news, it seems like we're making some progress in that direction. Increased availability and access to really education programs for everyone. There was a lot of that lifelong learning that people were looking for. And looking at different ways to integrate the schools into the overall community, whether it's some type of after-school programs, adult education, and community recreation. I think there's a lot of that going on now, but I think maybe people aren't fully aware of all of the opportunities that exist. As far as provide, people are really looking for improved educational performance. They want the schools to do, to perform better. And they're also looking for well-maintained K through twelve public school facilities that are really operated effectively and efficiently in an affordable way. It gets back to that tax base question. And then continuing that great arts and educational programs that we have through the Cultural Center of Cape Cod, the Historical Society of Old Yarmouth, and a bunch of other types of similar institutions in town. And then last one is continuing educational programming for the seniors through the senior center. There's a lot of great programs for seniors there. The only real changes that came out of the survey were just noting our regional education or educational partners, and then just kind of separating some of the goals between educational performance and maintenance of the public school facilities. The last one here is the goals related to our libraries. We're really looking, again, people were very positive about our libraries. They like going to the library and like all the different programs and materials and activities that you can do there. So we really were looking at different ways to expand the library facilities and really looking to promote them, not just education centers, but also as recreational and cultural gathering spaces, which is what they really are. They're kind of more of a multi-generational gathering space. And then we're looking to provide new library facilities, not getting specifically how those facilities would be provided, but getting new facilities that really serve as that multi-generational meeting place with a variety of program events. And they were looking for improved technology and, and more automation. So what do we do moving forward? Hopefully, our next step is securing some funding at the twenty twenty-two annual town meeting to engage consultants to assist us in the development of the local comprehensive plan. We're looking to update that to be compatible with the Cape Cod Commission's regional policy plan and the Yarmouth Vision Plan. Identified there are some of the things that are included, the different components of the LCP related to natural systems, which are all our great environmental, the built systems, our community design, transportation, waste management, all of that coastal resiliency. And then our community systems, which are really our cultural heritage, our economy and housing. And then all the great things that came out of the vision plan, which is really, you know, education, the libraries, the town services, senior services, and, and recreation. So the LCP, we're kind of anticipating that taking eighteen to twenty-four months to get through with the assistance with consultants. And as with the vision plan, we're really gonna be needing that public involvement from a lot of different boards and committees, the general public, everybody kind of weighing in so that we get a, a good comprehensive document that represents everyone's direction. Open it up for questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Dan, do you have any questions or comments?
Thank you very much. Thank you really to the Planning Board for all of this work. I really appreciate this because, you know, several times we've had outside consultants come in and tell us what our town is. And it's so nice to see something that's self-reporting that our community and our volunteers have done a really amazing job at really deleting or delineating what this town has to offer. And it's really quite exp And it's really quite expansive. It's, it's much broader than I was even aware of in many different areas. So I think that's great information for everybody because there's things that this town offers that people just are not aware of. And if we can find vehicles of getting that information out, I, I think that, you know, all, everybody in the town benefits by that. I also appreciate the, the fact that you've done this so completely and so well really does give us an opportunity to now move forward and to use this as kind of a guideline in terms of future planning and redevelopment. We had to do the hard work first. And then you're going to, obviously, you're going to go to the LCP and continue this process. But you've done the really yeoman's work at this point, and we couldn't have gone forward without this. And the timing is perfect because we're, we're just wading into wastewater now. And we've got, you know, people are worried about redevelopment and how it might be a bad thing for Yarmouth. But this is an opportunity for Yarmouth to really create itself in a new, in an improved way, you know? And so the work you've done here is so important. I'm so appreciative of it. And I hope that we can get various facets of this report out to people. And then particularly at that end, when you're talking about getting people involved in the LCP process, you know, it's great to have the people that are on our committees currently, but it would be really wonderful to get some new people involved also, to get some new voices heard. As far as the report itself, I, I agreed with all of it. I was curious that senior housing wasn't mentioned under the senior services and for affordable housing. That seems to me at least to be something that is glaringly needed in this town. I was surprised it wasn't in there.
If I, if I can just address that historic, and the, the housing goals here that we set out were, we worked very closely with Mary Wagon on this, the duty expert, for sure. And we purposely didn't want to start identifying specific types of housing other than affordable. Clearly, that word is in there. And that, and the reason for that is mostly that it just gives us a broader goal that encompasses all kinds of housing, not just apartments, condos, single-family homes. So it wasn't that we, we overlooked it. There was, there was plenty of discussion about all different kinds of, of, if you will, affordable housing. But we think it's under that umbrella. And as we, as the local, as the, as the Housing Production Plan moves forward, those specifics will come out.
Okay. One of the things that caught my attention was adequate maintenance. I always worry about that word, adequate. Twenty years ago, we shifted from excellence in schools to adequacy in schools, and we've reaped the benefit of that. And I, you know, well-maintained is one thing, adequate is another. I'm always troubled by that word because adequate seems to be less than, um, less than. What else? I'm just curious, not for this plan itself, but do we have a comprehensive listing of all the businesses in town?
I would think maybe the chamber. That would start as a base, the chamber members.
Right, but not every business in town is part of the chamber.
Yeah.
The clerk should have.
There are certain, yeah, you have to have a business certificate and that type of thing. But I don't know whether they all sit in a very easily general list that you could quickly look up. Obviously, people who have liquor licenses are, you know, kept in a separate pile and that type of thing. But that's, it's an interesting question.
Okay, I was just curious. I think that's all for now. Thank you so much for the work you've done.
Just a quick comment before I go to Tracy. All these businesses that need licenses and permits, as you mentioned, like liquor license, you could probably collect most of them very quickly through that process.
It might have been.
I would say maybe eighty, ninety percent of them just through the licensing and the permits. But Tracy.
No, I just want to say thank you so much. Obviously, I'm not going to beat a drum about the local comprehensive plan, but I've been here a long time waiting for a local comprehensive plan. Actually, when I started my volunteer work in this community, I was on the Growth Policy Advisory Council, which was the committee that worked on the local comprehensive plan. And that committee was dissolved. And we've never made it over the, over the threshold, so to speak, with getting that completed. And, you know, I know the commission has a lot of benefits to having that completed, which will help with all of these things for economic growth that we've, in the economy, that are so, so needed. So all of this goes so well together. I'm very much looking forward to the local comprehensive plan being completed so we can get some relief from the commission because, you know, unfortunately, it's, it's a barrier. It's a barrier to a lot of the redevelopment that we have. And so, you know, we, we have tried to create an environment here that's as clear to a developer as possible. But there's, unfortunately, I know the commission has a lot of benefits to it and its protection of the environment, so to speak. But there's just a lot of businesses that won't go through that process because it's, you know, it's unpredictable and very expensive. And it's not laid out the way that we lay out what the requirements are. I think most developers know that there are costs associated with redevelopment, and they're fine with that as long as they know what they are to go, to begin with. So anyway, that's been a long, long time coming, a lot of years. And I, I do think that if we can, if we can get that complete and we can get some relief, I think we will see some of the, the changes that we've wanted to see here, that with a wastewater. I think the two of them together are going to be huge for us. You know, your original survey was nine hundred and twenty, right? Yeah, so I was, I guess I was trying to figure out what it really took to make the list, so to speak. Not every comment, I'm sure, made this. So what was the criteria just for the public at home to be able to be incorporated into the vision plan?
The vision plan, if you actually replied to the second vision or you attended a meeting and provided a comment, all of those were reviewed.
From the second, from the second go-around or from the first?
From the first and the second.
So every single comment from all the people were incorporated in here?
Well, it wasn't incorporated. They were discussed with the planning board, who then decided whether it was, you know, should be incorporated.
Okay, so it was the planning board who chose from those comments what made it here?
If I may, there were, in, in, in the responses from all of the members of the community, some were very specific that weren't at the 10,000-foot flyover, which is what a vision plan should be. So we, we even had, you know, where we could sort the word police. How many comments had the word police in it? And each one of us, planning board, owned a particular goal. And we went through the hundreds of responses to that particular question. Anyone who wrote a comment that, that related to that particular goal, we then were responsible for culling, going through all of the responses, and making sure that they lined up, that we didn't miss anything, that we, and we did miss some things in the original set of question, which Kathy tried to highlight a little bit tonight. So yes, some, but not everything, because some of the other things are lower level.
Yep, perfect. No, I think it's important for the public to know how we got to this point. So, you know, there's no real aha moment for me. I was, these are all, which is good, right? I mean, in the respect that the, the majority of it is the things that we've been working on, and they've been, to some extent, anyway, the high level has been incorporated in our goals. So now's the time really to, to get that well down. And I'm really excited to watch it go forward. So I just, I appreciate all of this and everybody's input, especially the planning board and you, Ms. Crowley, and all the work you've done. I've watched some of your meetings, and it's just amazing to watch all the work that went into it. So I'm very thankful and for the public.
Thank you, Tracy. Peter?
Miss Post Stoltz, my thunder in the LCP. I was on planning board in eighty-nine and ninety, and the LCP was almost done at that point.
Yep.
But with the local visioning that, that you've done and stuff, and I've read these over and over again, I, I think it's, it's really great and really well that it's done together. And I think with the local visioning, it will help you put the LCP together very nicely. To do everything that you need to do, it's going to be a lot of money to do all those, all those things. So I think after the LCP is in place, priorities are going to have, have to be set and to make it worthwhile. But this, this is fantastic. And Ms. Crowley and, and Kathy, you've done, done a great job as, as well as the rest of, rest of planning board. Thank you.
I have nothing to add. I'm in general agreement with the comments that my colleagues have made. You, you do note in the report, though, in response to Peter's comment that there are going to have, there are going to have to be priorities to implement these things. But that, that's always the case. But I think the overall composite is very good. And based on my experience living in this town for a virtual lifetime is, is complete and accurate. And I'm not really surprised by these priorities because of these concepts. Because as Tracy said, we've been dealing with them for a very long time, but not in such an integrated way. And, and this puts that together in an integrated fashion. And now there's a question of culling through it and saying, you know, we, we can do this or we can do these two things, what's more important? It doesn't mean the other things won't get done. It just means that you can't do it all at once, just economically. So that's going to be an interesting process. But you've, you've done a great job. I, I, I am particularly thankful for the way you laid out the materials. They're, they're very organized, they're very easy to follow. And so that was Kathy. So thank you very much, Kathy, for doing that. I enjoyed reading it, and it was easy to follow your presentation tonight as well. So thank you, thank you, Joanne.
I, I would be remiss. I know we're going to talk about a couple of warrant articles that the planning board also has. But before we do that, I'd be remiss if I, I didn't bring attention to Article 11, which includes, you're going to get to this, I know, Mr. Rittenhour, I think it's eleven. It includes actually the request for the local comprehensive plan to be part of a free cash disposition. So I just wanted to, I, I could not not say something about, about that.
Right, yeah, I was, I was going to, I was going to ask, do you have, do you have quotes? And for that is, where did the hundred and fifty come from, the figure?
What article is that? Because I don't think it's eleven.
This is the draft that was, I have, I have it as.
What is it, Tracy?
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Changed, okay.
Tracy said it is now thirteen.
It's now thirteen, okay. I apologize.
Page twenty-one. The amount was a hundred thousand. And we had done some preliminary work with consultants that provide comprehensive planning assistance. And that was a budget number we came up with. And we also have a preliminary scope. I know that planning boards are doing a lot of work.
Yeah, there's a hundred thousand line item in there.
We've been, with the help of Mr. Rittenhour, we've been, you know, checking around, and Kathy's checking with her, her cohort of town planners as to what, what kinds of, kind of the order of magnitude that we'll need for an appropriate allocation for this. And so we were happy to see that there's a position of some kind in the art, in the warrant, for some allocation of funding. We think we're in the ballpark of between a hundred and a hundred and fifty, whatever. Obviously, this has to be balanced with other town needs and our favorite word tonight, priorities. So, and we fully respect that. But Kathy's working closely to try to get a good plan together that we would have an RFP and get some consultant help because it cannot be done without consultants.
Yeah, I quoted a hundred and fifty from the, from the memo that's here.
From December thirtieth, that's right. That's, that has since changed.
I think the amount of money for an LCP varies, can vary significantly. And it depends on a lot of different things. I mean, it could be seventy-five thousand, a hundred and fifty-plus thousand dollars. The fact that we have our vision plan completed is a huge chunk of that. We are updating our housing production plan, which is also another big chunk. And we're also looking at updating our open space and rec plan. So I think with some updated information combined with some additional input from a consultant, and I do agree, really, even though you get help from a consultant, it really is a community-driven and a planning board, local board-driven product. And I think that that's very important. And making sure that, you know, public participation is adequate. You know, we do have an older document. We do have a larger community. We're not, we're not one of the smaller communities out there. So all of these things play into it. But we're very good at trying to work and get the best bang for our buck. And, you know, if the hundred thousand dollars works with the community for balancing those other areas that we need to fund, then, then that's something we can certainly work with. But we haven't gone out for an RFP right now.
Is there any other planning board articles that, that are going to be coming up?
Yes, there are two. One on short-term rentals and the other on seasonal, seasonal employee housing.
So you can refer, it starts on page twenty-seven of your warrant. It would be Article twenty-six and Article twenty-seven.
Can you give a brief overview? It's up to you. You haven't had any public hearings on this yet?
Kathy, why don't you give a little?
Twenty-six and twenty-seven, right?
Right, so Article twenty-six is on page twenty-seven, and Article twenty-seven is on page thirty.
Okay, let's talk about twenty-seven, twenty-six.
So basically, this article is amending the zoning bylaw to allow for short-term rentals to be incorporated with some general provisions to try and maintain the character of our existing neighborhoods and ensure that we get the continued revenues from the town, for the town, from the short-term rental tax. As you know, short-term rentals are very vital revenue stream for our wastewater initiative. In FY twenty-one, the tax brought in 1.34 million to the town with over 1.16 million for FY twenty-two through December of 2021. So we're talking about some considerable amount of money. Essentially, the short-term rentals are when you're renting a room or apartment or a house for less than thirty-one days, but it doesn't constitute a hotel or bed and breakfast or a lodging facility. So many are really those houses in residential neighborhoods that you see rented out periodically. Yarmouth has eight hundred and eighty-nine short-term rentals registered within the state in 2021. Just as a reference, we have about seventeen thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine housing units in town. So relatively speaking, it's somewhat of a, of a smaller percentage. Why are we kind of moving forward with this now? Because of the recent case law with the Styler versus the ZBA of Linfield, which this past July, which really brought attention to how short-term rentals are viewed in people's zoning bylaws, really had us take a look at ours. So although we have a health department that requires annual registration, inspections, and also sets occupancy limitations on all rental properties, our current zoning bylaw does not mention short-term rentals at all. They may have been viewed as kind of that customary accessory use in the past, which was more of a family-oriented vacations. But there really has been a shift in the type of, of short-term rental with the advent of those online booking platforms, and they've become much more commercial in nature. And they've, we've also received an increase in complaints with regard to things like noise and where people are parking and trash and, and the types of rentals, having it being more big events and parking versus the family rental. So this bylaw would allow for short-term rentals by right in a very simple manner with very limited provisions in order to be sure that we have for the upcoming summer season. We can, we still have those short-term rentals. Mark is already getting inquiries as to whether short-term rentals are allowed in our zoning bylaw, and he has to say technically they're not because it's not referenced in there. And if it's not specifically allowed, it's prohibited. So some of the limitations that have been incorporated have to do with trash removal, parking, the duration of the rental and the type of rentals, which are included in, in the draft that you have. Understanding that this amendment is really happening fairly quickly, and the town may wish to undertake a more detailed planning process on this. It has been included, the sunset clause has been added to the article. So under the sunset clause, the provisions of the article would expire on November thirteenth, 2024, unless amended at a future town meeting. So what we're trying to do is get something before town meeting that they can vote on so we incorporate short-term rentals into our zoning bylaw that also give us time to maybe do a more. that also give us time to maybe do a more thoughtful planning process. And also have some type of summit in the fall with a bunch of different stakeholders to kind of say, how did it go this last summer with these rules in place? Were things better? Were there other things that we need to take into consideration?
May I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead, yeah.
I think I'm a little confused about, if we don't have it in the zoning, how are we currently doing short-term rentals? How are they approved?
I'm not sure whether they're just not, like I said, they could be considered an accessory, a customary accessory use, which is something that I think in the past, when people were just renting to families for the week's vacation, that was one thing. It was more in tune with the feel of the neighborhoods. But now that these are like short-term, like maybe even two days or three days, people coming for bigger parties, people are purchasing homes just for the strategic purpose of using them for an Airbnb, it's really changed the flavor in that that's not something that's allowed in our current bylaw. Except customary accessory uses have to be, not be detrimental to the neighborhood. Obviously, from things that are happening, they're becoming to be detrimental to the neighborhood.
And the gatekeeper is what the building commissioner?
The gatekeeper is the building commissioner. And I think he just hasn't been necessarily, and he has the opportunity to enforce or not enforce, and he hasn't at this stage. But let's not put him in that awkward position. Let's try and move forward with something that would allow.
This is a substantial funding mechanism for wastewater, so.
It is, and it also leaves a question mark. It's talking about the certainty that Tracy was talking about. People who want to rent out there, they want to know that they can rent it, and it's not going to be a problem later.
Is the detriment to neighborhoods, is that a significant issue?
In some particular locations, there are. There have been some very, very large weddings that have been held without obviously adequate parking. So where are all these people going to the wedding parking? They're parking all over the place. People have had their mailboxes wiped out. People have had to call the police because people have been partying late into the night and being very loud. So there are issues with these, and I think it's more, like I say, it's gone from the traditional family rental vacation to more of a party atmosphere and some rentals, not all of them.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Tracy.
Thanks. Was this taken from another community?
There was a compilation of a bunch of different bylaws that I had looked at. Some communities deal with it in a general bylaw. There already is Chapter one oh eight of our general bylaws, which deals with occupancy of buildings. And that's where the health department does their, gets their registration, annual inspection, and they set the occupancy through that. So this is just dealing with it in the zoning bylaw.
Okay. Well, I'm particularly interested in the definition. One, it says at least one room. The other thing I think that we have to be careful of not having them allowed is getting the inspection and the certificate. Because if they're not allowed, how are we, how are we, we're still issuing, are we issuing these certificates at this point in time and collecting the rooms' tax on them just without the allowance? Because we've been down this road before.
I believe the way that the actual application form is, it just says whether, it doesn't get into whether you're a short-term rental, it just says seasonal rental.
Okay.
And it very specifically says, this does not ensure that you're in compliance with zoning.
Okay, so seasonal. So, because we got, you know, this, it's all in the details of the definition. You know, we had the transient thing with the hotel rooms for a long time that we wrestled with. What's a transient? They had to have proof of permanent homeownership elsewhere. So it was, you know, that's basically, we took it from the state. It was the state's, so that's why I'm wondering where this definition came from, if it was.
This came from that Chapter sixty-four, which was the excise tax, yes.
Okay, good. So it's consistent with other ones that talks about the one to thirty-one consecutive days?
The only thing that got added was really, all short-term rentals shall be transient in nature and not rented to the same occupant month to month. And that came out of a comment from Mary Wagan, who was, what she was finding is that instead of having someone lease their property for the entire year to the same person, they were doing it month to month using short-term rentals. And what was happening, obviously, they don't have the same protections that you would have if you had a yearly lease. It's basically tenanted at will, and they could be kicked out at any moment. But they were kind of living there.
Again, we've learned our lesson with the hotels, right? So that was the same thing. It was ninety consecutive days, which was the state's rule. They would either leave for one day, or they remove them from one room to another room. And then their ninety days would start over. So, you know, I think anything over, I think anything under the ninety days is eligible for the tax, is that correct?
I believe it is.
Yeah.
For motels.
And not for short-term.
Well, short-term rentals are specifically defined as this. So if you rent your short-term rental, would you have to register with the state? But you rent it for fourteen days or less, you don't have to pay any excise tax?
Fourteen days or less?
Yes. You have to register. And we had like forty-eight of those eight hundred and eighty-nine were people who said that they were only rented for two weeks.
Well, I like the sunset clause, because I think we learn sometimes from these things. It's ever-evolving, you know, Airbnb kind of came on really fast. And, you know, we know people don't travel the way that they used to. You know, they like to be in homes that have amenities and cooking facilities. The only thing that jumps out at me here is potential number of people. It could be, it could be a significant number of people.
Well, that's where the rental certificate, it specifically says, including occupancy limitations based on inspections.
Right. And then we also have the whole parking regulation. So I think we should definitely try it, definitely have, having something's better than not having anything. And, you know, with the sunset clause, which we have also done before on a few that we've tried, gives us the ability, well, we could always go back to town meeting and have the ability to change it anyway. But I appreciate, I appreciate you bringing this forward.
Peter, do you have anything on Article twenty-six?
General provisions, four one eight point five, duration. Why, what is three days or less? Is it two nights and three days? Is it, is it seventy-two hours? What does, what does three days mean?
That's a good question. We can clarify that and say two nights and three days.
Next question is, why limited to three days? You know, especially, especially, I want to come down for Columbus Day weekend. That's three days, but now I'm limited.
You're not limited, this is the minimum, and this, it's the, we originally had twenty-four hours. And then we had a meeting with Bruce Murphy and Kevin Hook, who's the housing inspector. And he said that they typically like to not have anyone be renting these short-term rentals for less than two days, but they prefer three days.
And under, under item number four, types of rentals? I'm thinking of, you know, some of the questions you're probably going to get at your public meeting.
Appreciate it.
No events, not limited to weddings, corporate events. I already know that some people have had, had family reunions. And I think it's more important to say words that it doesn't disturb the neighborhood, doesn't overwhelm the neighborhood, you know, that kind of stuff. Because, you know, a family reunion could be four people.
I think a family reunion of four people, no one would notice.
But, but you specifically said no family reunions. And again, again, I think, I think, you know, if you're more general, that, you know, if you've got four people, no one's going to notice. If you've got a wedding with five people in the house, no one, no one's going to care. So I think more specifically, what you're driving at is language that it's not going to disturb the neighborhood, whatever the event happens to be. Would you agree with that, or do you think?
I think what we were learning as we went through this, and again, this is happening very quickly, because our primary interest here is protecting the short-term rental revenue stream. So we, and the important thing is if it's not mentioned in a zoning bylaw, then it's prohibited. So we're trying to get to codify something here. And this is helpful to us, because these are exactly the kind of questions that are going to come up at a public hearing and at future, you know, at the next planning board meeting. The idea was that family reunions of the Smiths and hundreds of people show up. That's really what we're focusing on.
Right, and that was, that was my point. You know, if it's, if it's, if it's me and my, me and three other cousins, who cares? There's very few Smiths around, I understand that. But again, you know, again, protect the neighborhood, and I think that's the thrust. And I'm very much in favor of putting, putting a bylaw in to get it, to get it set so we can, we can move forward on this thing. But I just hit those, hit those, hit those couple of things. And, you know, the rest of your provisions, I think they all make, they all make good sense. I just, I just hit on define what, what three means and, and, you know, types of rentals.
And we'll bring that back, absolutely, thank you.
Three, three's easy to define. It's one more than two and one less than four. There you go, right?
You're going to charge us for that legal advice?
Yeah, you could work that family reunion thing in terms of relating that or any other crowd event to the number of occupants for which the property is authorized and key that into that, so that whether it's a family reunion or a wedding or whatever, the total number of people present at the premises cannot exceed the occupancy limit for which the town authorizes it.
I think typically what I've seen with the rentals is, even if you have the people who are staying overnight, say the occupancy is four, if you have two bedrooms, the occupancy is four. People come and visit during the day. So what I have seen in some other bylaws is limiting the maximum number of people who can be on the property to like ten people or twelve people, or the occupancy, whichever is high.
And that may do it, you know? So you won't have to worry about the event or, because Peter's right, you're going to, you're going to generate debate when you use terms like, you know, a family reunion. Well, we're getting together, we're not really a reunion, we're just visiting each other, whatever. I mean, the problem with language is it's not as precise as people think it is. And no matter how hard you try, oftentimes, the people that are drafting these documents can't contemplate the arguments that are going to, so you have to kind of assume the worst and say, what can we put in here that we can limit it? As Kathy said, maybe the answer is to say how many people maximum can be on that property at any one time.
How many rooms they have to rent? So that would be very difficult to, maybe they have a place that has four different bedrooms they're renting.
You could make it a certain number or the occupancy rate, whichever is greater. So you'd always be able to have, I think even at my house, I mean, we're, you have a limited number of people who can occupy the building, but you have people come over. You have Christmas and Thanksgiving and those types of things, and people come and visit, and then they, they leave.
There have been problems, though. There have been problems with these events all over the place for weddings and other things. And the neighbors lose their minds, because the next thing you know, there's thirty, forty people there, there's cars up and down the street, that happens, that's not a rare occurrence.
It's not.
And the bigger, nicer, more upscale properties are where these events take place, down by the beach usually. And so, anyone else? Okay, let's go to the next article. And then Bob's going to take us through the remaining articles.
This is an article that was developed in collaboration with a local organization, the Yarmouth Community Partnership. It's really meant to help address the temporary housing needs for seasonal workers, mainly the J-one and the H-two-B workers that are needed so important for our tourism economy. Currently, we have on our zoning bylaw right now, it allows motels and hotels to use up to fifteen percent of their rooms to house their own employees. But between April first and October thirty-first, there's also some provisions in there that they have to meet, like having an onsite proctor, access to cooking facilities, and also an annual permit issued by the building department. This article just expand the pool of seasonal employees who can stay within the designated fifteen percent of hotel motel rooms from just the employees of the hotel motel to employees from other Yarmouth businesses. And they need to be employed in other Yarmouth businesses a minimum of twenty-four hours per week. I think what's really being envisioned is Yarmouth businesses will be contracting with Yarmouth hotel motel owners in order to develop some type of housing package, which they will then use to help get J-one and H-two-B workers to come as part of working at their, at their place. If you had anything else to add?
I think that the, the nice part about this particular article is that it was really a collaborative effort with the chamber and this subcommittee, which was comprised of some significant players in this industry for the, for the town of Yarmouth. And Jamie Viera of the Davenport Companies, Jack Hines, some, some very big players, and obviously the chamber itself, coming to ask for this expansion for a better B-to-B connection here, that any, any business in Yarmouth could contract with a hotel business to help find seasonal housing for their employees and work together on that. And so from, from that perspective, we welcome the opportunity to bring it forward.
And it's, it's still limited to fifteen percent, right? This was an argument that was had several years ago, and I think this is great to allow other, other businesses to go there. And again, as long as you accumulate fifteen percent, we won't end up with a, with a, with a facility, which is, which is all employee housing.
Yeah, that's under number nine, no more than fifteen percent of any hotel motel rooms at a single parcel may be used for employee housing with fractions rounded to the nearest hole.
I'm just looking up what season, I'm surprised the seasonal is seven months, is that how it is now?
It says seven, yeah, seven between May and October, I think it was.
Yeah, this is April first and October thirty-first.
April and October thirty-first, yeah. Seasonal employees considered being employed as employed in Yarmouth for no more than seven months between April one and October thirty-first.
Based on the information that you've received from businesses, number one, how many hotels do you think will participate? And do you think the fifteen percent is going to do it? I mean, are we?
It's hard, it's hard to know. I'd like to think that the business community is proposing this, that they know of some people who might be interested.
And they were more interested in doing the fifteen percent instead of doing one property solely at, like as a seasonal. I guess I get worried about the mixture, right? With, with the transient families and some of them that are there more long-term.
I think it can, it can only be the worker, it can't be family members, and the workers need to be eighteen and over. So it's really kind of specifically going more towards the J-one and H-two-B, so that you're limiting that to a certain extent. Keeping it fifteen percent really keeps the motel hotel owner responsible, because they have paying guests, they're going to want to make sure that these employees are behaving themselves. Employees have a built-in reason for behaving, because they could lose their housing and their job and get kicked out of the country. So there's a lot of built-in ways of policing this versus, I think, we, we have run into problems before where we've tried to do it all in one, or it was done by de facto all in one particular building, and you were getting, you know, lots of loud, rowdy parties at the end of the shifts, and you were getting the police calls. So I think by trying to mix it up, the idea was maybe there'll be better behavior.
Okay.
Who knows? We're going to put this on the summit in the fall, too, and see what we get.
Yeah, we need to do something, right? So we've tried, we've tried doing it a little bit more scaled back, so this is ramping it up a little bit. And again, you know, if it doesn't work, we can always change it if we have to, but.
Again, my only comment there is that I think it also shows that we're listening as part of the vision, bettering our, our relationship with the business community. These small things really do help.
They're big things, though. Last year, they couldn't get people, well, first with COVID, the J-ones were a problem. And, you know, housing's consistently a problem. So, you know, we had, we had several, you know, thousands of people here. They couldn't go out to eat anywhere. They couldn't go to a lot of the places because they had to close, because they didn't have help. So to the extent that we can, you know, see if it helps, hopefully, we, you know, this year with the COVID numbers, the J-ones, I guess. the COVID numbers, the J-1s, I guess, have been more allowed. So I think to your point, we definitely need to do what we can to try to help the businesses, because it helps all of us. I appreciate that.
Who else?
I myself am not clear. Can you tell me what the distinction is between a J-1 and an H-2B?
I'm afraid I don't know. I thought the H-2B was longer, and that's why the April to October, because they're not students, they might be.
J-1s are typically students, I believe.
Okay.
But in any event, they're gonna be seasonal workers.
Yeah, they come and go.
Do you have requirements as far as how you understand the proctor, the cooking facilities? Are those delineated somewhere for people?
Typically, what happens is when people go to get the permit, the annual permit from Mark, he asks, you have to prove that you're meeting all of these things before he'll issue the permit. And if you can't meet all these things, you do have the opportunity to go to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit. But what we did is, this was originally a special permit, and then we were finding that the people who were using it, which was mainly, I think, the inflatable park, I do know, use it. They were meeting all of this. So it was like, why are we making them go to get an annual special permit? Let's just make it something that could be issued by the building commissioner. So they need to prove to Mark that they're doing all of this.
Oh, yeah, with the special permit, there's a time drag there, you know?
Yes. People, it wasn't necessary. It was turned out to not be necessary, so it was changed.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, before our planning representatives read, one additional item is that we have received a petition article for zoning, which is found on page 34 of your warrant, Article 29. And we require a vote of the Board of Selectmen to refer this article to the Planning Board for a public hearing in order to...
What's number, was that 29?
It's 29.
On page 34?
Page 34. And it requires a public hearing.
Yeah, I believe this article came up before.
Is this the same? Okay.
Is that the Barry Av piece?
Yes, this was the article that was put to public hearing by us for the special town meeting. And it did not go forward.
As I recall, the Planning Board did not put that vote to put that article on the warrant for the special, correct?
They amended the article to remove this.
And so now it's petitioned, but it's the same article?
Correct.
Basically? Okay. And so we need a vote to refer this...
To the Planning Board for a public hearing.
For a public hearing. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I've never heard that motion before.
It's required in the zoning act. So usually, we don't get petitioned articles for zoning, but when they come in...
Typically, it goes to them, and then they come back to us for a recommendation.
Right, not for petitions. They come to you.
Huh. This is the first time it's come to us first. Just...
They're doing things right.
Right. I'll make a second, so give me disgust.
Okay. If that's the correct procedure, then that's... I mean, I know there's a lot of things that come up from time to time where somebody says, well, we didn't do it that way in the past.
Doesn't mean it was right.
But I don't think that's justification of persistent error. If we should have brought it forward. So you're saying that that's the proper procedure, right?
Yes, and it's very important, because the Planning Board is, under the statute, is tasked with making a recommendation at town meeting. And if the Board of Selectmen doesn't refer within 14 days of the receipt of the petition to the Planning Board, then, you know, that may impair the Planning Board's opportunity to make a recommendation. And those recommendations have, you know, force an effect of law in the event that the bylaw is not approved. It can't be brought back within a certain period of time. So it's important that we refer it to the Planning Board. The Planning Board conducts a public hearing. That enables them to make a recommendation at town meeting that has an effect.
Do you ladies have any input on that? No?
We would do it.
We have to do it.
Yeah. Yeah. Peter seconded.
Peter, you have something?
No, and just to clarify, and I think I understand, but just to make sure that by us voting to give this to the Planning Board, this gives the Planning Board the opportunity to review it and have a public hearing.
Correct.
Okay.
Could you repeat that?
If we vote it, if that gives the Planning Board the authorization to review it and have a public hearing.
Correct.
And then after the public hearing, they can either recommend it or not recommend it, and then it comes back to us for us to recommend it or not recommend it.
Correct. And I think actually the Finance Committee does too, don't they?
No, usually it's the Planning Board.
They'll usually defer, but I think they have the right to.
They have voted before, depending on the article.
Says it right in the warrant.
Yeah, I think they'll usually defer to the...
Which I thought it was the Planning Board should have a recommendation in here.
Yeah, in the warrant, we noticed that that was missing in the draft.
On both articles.
So I don't have any personal knowledge of this requirement, so I get to defer to the town administrator. I just don't know.
It doesn't hurt. It just...
I don't see a problem with it, because it's gonna go to the Planning Board. There's gonna be public input, which is always good.
They've always had a public hearing on it. It just was automatic.
It allows us to fill out one of the forms that goes to the Attorney General as to when you receive the petition article, and then when it was given to us to have the public hearing, and it's required to be done in 14 days. You guys got it two weeks ago. So it's just, we've never received a petitioned article. It's always been articles that were generated from the Planning Board, but because it's petitioned, it goes to you. You then need to formally give it to us.
Okay. So ready to vote on the motion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously.
Is that the case with just zoning?
With what, please?
Well, there's another petition article in here.
Oh, that's a general bylaw, so this is only for zoning.
Okay.
Thank you very much, ladies.
Thank you.
Thanks for catching me on that last item, Bob. So I talked to Mark briefly about the next agenda item, and I talked to Bob a little bit about it as well. So we usually get the warrant much later, and we're under the gun, so to speak, to make recommendations. And it's early this time with the thought that Bob is gonna just kind of run through it tonight to let us, give us an overview of it, and then we're going to kind of parcel out sections of it for individual agenda items. So we can have more input and more understanding and get more staff information if we require it.
Well, there's some stuff in here we have never even seen before, which is a first that that's happened, so...
A lot of it.
Yeah.
But it's early. We don't usually get it this early. So I'm gonna turn this over to Bob, and he's gonna run us through this first read, so to speak, of the warrant.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. And just a couple of preparatory words. I know it may seem like a little jarring to see the actual language on these items you haven't even discussed. Generally speaking, I know we referred to it. At the early stages of the first draft, there's a list of articles submitted by departments, and then we go through them and talk about them. And then if they pass muster, we get the details so that you could look at them. And then everything is towards the end of the process, jammed in there, and then you have to make a recommendation. I want to thank the departments. I made a very big push to receive the information on submitted articles early enough so that, in addition to having just a list that on the first draft, that we could show the Board of Selectmen the contemplated language. And then that way, when you review it, just like we did with those zoning articles, you get a sense of the detail and the meaning of the article, rather than just on a list, we're gonna do zoning on seasonal employees, and you might see that the 11th hour. So everyone worked real hard. I know Planning did, and all of the departments. And so what we're able to do is, but I just want to make sure everyone understands, it's still a first draft. So the Board of Selectmen's warrant, any of these items, you know, they have to be approved by the Board of Selectmen, number one, to be placed on the warrant. And then if they are placed on the warrant, then you have your recommendation as well. And the hope is that by the time it gets to be decision time, you're familiar enough with all of the details, so that, you know, you can have reasons why, well, this is not on, can wait. So... And I do have a list that's the one-page cheat sheet, because, you know, the warrant is kind of lengthy. But I'll go right through and describe what you have in front of you. There's all of the preliminary information and the common finance terms. The Finance Committee will ultimately have their report when we get to that process. And we start off with Article 1. Are the budget transfers for the overruns in the FY '22 operating budget. And at the time of publication, we were aware potentially DPW had a couple of items of snow and ice. I had been contacted by the Police Department that they have a potential shortfall in their budget, and afforded that information to the Finance Department, and we're working with the Police Department to determine what the specific nature, how big the shortfall is gonna be, whether those funds can be recovered within the budget. But I mentioned that it may be at Police Department, potentially, to Article 1. We need more information on that. It's just a late filed item that we saw. So that's Article 1. And from there, we move right into Article 2, is the FY '23 operating budget. And you can compare this to your budget books. These are the proposed numbers. The Finance Committee has had tentative approval, but they're still working through that process. But this is the proposed '23 budget. You can see how that looks.
Are there any new hires?
Are there any new hires? I'm trying to think in terms of, there's a couple of part-time slots. In terms of full-time hires, I don't believe, so very few if any, there is in the, we're gonna have a... The full-time hires need to be approved by the Board of Selectmen, right? So the one I'm aware of is, the Board of Health had requested last year an additional housing inspector, and this sort of ties in with the whole short-term rental thing, seasonal rentals. And that is a proposed new position. So that will be in front of the Board of Selectmen for a presentation in a hearing, and you'll need to approve that. Other than that, I do not believe there are any other full-time staff members. Pretty confident there. That's Article 2. And then when you get into page 14, Article 3 starts in the, you can see Article 3, 4, 5, 6 are the special revenue enterprise fund budgets. We separate those out from the omnibus budget. So Article 3 is the Gulf budget. That's on page 14. And Article 4 is the Water Department budget. That's also on page 14. Then on page 15, you have Article 5, which is the Septage Enterprise budget. Article 6 on page 16 is Wastewater Enterprise. Then Article 7 on page 16 is the DY Regional School District budget. So it follows a format similar to what you've seen in previous years. And then we move to page 17. Article 8 is the Cape Cod Regional Technical High School budget. And...
Are the numbers that we're seeing relatively accurate to date?
They are. Now, the School Department, no. We just, I just saw some numbers today in the School Department, and they look considerably better than this. And I think because of a number of things, the municipal revenue growth factor plus the state aid, the numbers I saw, Mr. Glenn was right, it looks like a 1.3 impact. Now, that's not final. But the numbers look better that we received. So we'll be updating the budget. But the rest of the budget are the accurate numbers. So it's only, the only budgets that we don't have are the School Department budgets. They come in a little later, and they've been working on theirs diligently, but I'm very, very encouraged with the numbers that I've seen. So...
Thank you.
We'll have the school budgets nailed down by the next time that you see this. And then that takes care of the operating budget. From there, we move in, starting on Article 9 on page 17, into the capital budget portions, and they're similarly separated with the enterprise funds, separate from the free cash funds. So Article 9 is the Gulf capital. And you can see the detail there. And these are accurate numbers as well. Article 10 is the Water Division Capital Budget. That's on page 18. Also, on the bottom of page 18 is a Water Department Capital Article, and that's 3.8 million for the 1.8-mile Route 6A water main. That's been in their plan. So that's on the warrant as...
Is that a borrowing?
That is a borrowing.
Shouldn't that be 2/3?
Yes, it should. Note here.
How much do they have in their reserve? Is it 1.1?
2.2 million dollar balance.
Okay.
That's in the...
Exploration.
For Article 10. And that's Article 11, still on page 19. The next one is the Fire Department Capital. And again, that's from the Fire Receipts Reserve for Appropriation. That's listed out. And the next one is Article 13. That is all of the capital and free cash items, and I really need to hand it to Bill Scott on all of the capital for the special revenue funds and the free cash funds. I thought his work with the Capital Committee was stellar, and he's developing some long-term procedures and things, but all the information is there in detail. And...
So that's capital and free cash together?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
The same way it was done last year.
I don't think so. We used to have it separate. We had it together only because we didn't have the... We had cut the capital budget, which was a problem. So... You could just separate where the funding's coming from, dollar-wise, for us? How much of it's capital? How much of it's free cash? Did you set, do we set aside money and capital this year in the budget?
There is...
We had 1.5, and we're trying to work back towards that.
Right. Remember, there's roughly 2 million worth of capital in the budget, and then the items start after the cable television, number 1035, start the free cash items. And it also includes the roadway improvements. And the way that the budget's shaken out, we had two policies, if you recall, that we were trying to achieve. The funds that were taken out of the levy budget and placed in free cash that we were trying to put back into the levy budget were the 1.5 million in capital, and also the roadway improvements, which is in this article as well. And as it turned out, there's not enough levy capacity, just mathematically, to incorporate both of those. If the school budget comes in where we think it's gonna come in, you can see what we're trying to do is to raise and appropriate a share of this. And that we are hoping to raise and appropriate at least 750,000 to... We need to start a process. If we're gonna bring capital and roadway back into the levy budget, it can't be done in just one year. It needs to be a program to move, you know, between 750 and a million a year, if we're able to do that, which is, that's a big chunk, given every... if we're able to do that, which is, that's a big chunk, given everything else with only 2.5%. So it's a partial achievement on that, but you need a program. It's just that, you know, there's not
750, I mean, 1.3 just for roadways, that doesn't even get you halfway there. So basically, there's nothing for capital still in the levy.
Correct, correct.
That's a problem.
Yeah, it's a huge problem. I mean, you took all the capital out of the budget. And if you take a look at what the two and a half new money is, it doesn't equal the amount of the capital program and the roadway program. So there's not enough money to put it all back in one year. I mean, I really wish there was. We tried to do it. And that's with practically level funding every department, you know? The increases are very minimal in a lot of the departments. And that was the goal from the start, is to try to carve as much as we possibly can to store these back. So
All right, well, I'll save my comments.
I'd say if it takes you two or three years to do it, you're extremely lucky. That's a lot, that's a lot of money to take out of the levy budget, still have your levy budget up to 2.5, and then now we're going to bring it all back. So at any rate, just so you know what's in there, and then you'll be able to talk about it. And so that's Article Thirteen. So there's a detailed list with that. Article Fourteen is another capital item for the transfer station, 195,000 for the purchase of a scale. And that is from the receipts in that department. Explanation along with it. And here's another new and interesting one on page twenty-two. Article Fifteen is to establish a Recreation Revolving Fund. And that is, the Department of Revenue, I know, has been working on the town to get that done for a number of years. The old offset receipt system is a more archaic accounting mechanism. So we've been working with the Finance Department of Recreation to change that to a Recreation Revolving Fund under Mass. General Laws, Chapter 4453D. That's Article Fifteen. Article Sixteen is to reserve funds for the settlement of collective bargaining agreements.
Going back to fifteen?
Yes.
This revolving fund also sounds like on the edge of an enterprise fund. Is that correct or incorrect?
No, it's very much different. It's completely limited. What it does, it enables you to charge, similar to an enterprise fund, it enables you to charge fees which go into an account. And then those fees are used to run the programs in a given year. And, but it's not a separate fund. At the end of the year, anything that's remaining in the fund over $10,000 reverts back to the general fund. So it's designed, one thing it will enable them to do, it will enable them to be more flexible in making purchases and small capital equipment needs out of that fund you can do during the year. But it's only for a year-to-year operation of the recreation programs. But it will give the department more flexibility to expand programs if they have, you know, the wherewithal to do that. But it doesn't give you the option of creating retained earnings and, you know, and saving up money that you only are allowed to raise what you need to run the programs.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I have a question on that too, because twice here it says self-supporting recreational programs. So is that an overall? So, I mean, because some programs we want to keep that, I mean, there's probably some winners and some losers, but there's some that are important for programs for our community that don't have, that don't make money. So I get concerned because I feel like when you start talking about self-supporting funds, that they're going to have to show, you know, like I said, not every program that we put on, some of it's a good community benefit that doesn't, it's not self-supporting. And I think that's okay.
Right, exactly. And out of this fund, overall, the programs are self-supporting. Potentially not every single program. And this also doesn't include every single program. There's still a recreation budget. And, you know, there's some, this doesn't include life guides and some of the recreational programming. But what it does is it replaces the offset receipt system where you just estimate what the last year's revenues were, dump that into an account, and then they operate off that. And what the Recreation Committee and the Recreation Director indicate that they don't have enough flexibility to tailor programs like they need it. But it's the same problem, and you are allowed this. So if you have extra money from one program, you can subsidize another program through this, or you could subsidize it through the operating budget. But this just enables you to collect the fees and then spend them out in the same fiscal year.
So are they going to be spent on health insurance and employees and complete self-supporting?
There will be no, it's only for temporary and seasonal personnel.
Okay, so the year-round people will be in the recreation budget?
Right.
Yeah, like for camp personnel, for example.
Right.
That would be in the offset receipt account.
And what they're going to, this is going to take effect not this next fiscal year, the following year. So they're going to need to make adjustments in the operating budget to make sure any of the full-time people are covered in the town side. And in the revolving fund, they're allowed to cover seasonal people, temporary people, part-time people that don't have benefits.
Okay.
Yeah, so like instead of turning back funds to the town, let's say if the camp has a surplus of funds, they can use those funds for another individual program that might not be at the break-even level, but with that subsidy from that other account.
Right, because it's all in the same revolving account, but they can only do it during the same year. You can't run a profit and then get a big, because anything over 10,000 reverts back to the general fund. So that's how that works. And we can have a meeting with Recreation to talk about it further, but
That'll be interesting. Okay, what's next?
That's fifteen. And Article Sixteen is standard article for sums of money for results of collective bargaining settlements. And, you know, we still have some collective bargaining units that are unsettled. We haven't put any money in the budget for, so that's required. And, okay, Article Seventeen, another interesting one that is still over at Town Council for additional analysis. But what this does is it creates a special-purpose wastewater infrastructure stabilization fund. And it takes 75% of the short-term rental excise tax. And you can change that percentage. Doesn't have to be 75. It has to be more in order to use this mechanism, has to be more than 25. What we felt is that 75% gets it just over a million a year contribution into the wastewater fund, which is what's in the wastewater finance plan to use for short-term rentals to pay for wastewater. And what is particularly important is, you recall last year, we just took the amount and at town meeting appropriated it into the wastewater account. Once we get things rolling with the implementation of this program and take out these big debts, we can't be just taking money out of the general fund every year and transferring it to pay that debt. We need to make the revenue sources for the wastewater structural so that these accounts, the money automatically goes into them so that the money is available to transfer to pay that debt. And if you don't do that, people will be at each other's throats over these transfers every year. Because as you can see, the discussion we just had over the capital, there's not enough money under the levy limit to meet all of the needs for education, public safety, capital, under 2.5. And, you know, a lot of compromises have to be made. So that's why it's particularly important that we establish the fund for every element of the wastewater plan that has a structural basis so that we can transfer from those existing accounts. And so that's what Article Seventeen does.
So is this separate from the WIF account?
Yes.
In addition to the
It's in addition to the WIF. And the ones that we're going to be working with, just to recap a little in the finance plan, there's the WIF, there's the short-term rentals. And then a big one is the percentage of the new growth over a certain point is supposed to all go towards wastewater. And there's another article coming up that will address that point because similarly to the, these general fund revenues, such as whether it's the short-term rental money, whether it's new growth. New growth doesn't exist on its own. It's a portion of the property tax levy, right? That wasn't here last year, but it's still a portion of it. And it's something that you can't vote a portion of the property tax levy every single year to the wastewater piece. You know, you need to set it up so that a certain portion of the growth over a certain amount goes towards a fund to support wastewater. Because, you know, when those millions of dollars are due, you need to have the funds that are segregated to pay those.
So why, I guess, so we set up a water infrastructure fund already, and we're funding that piece that we talked about into that.
Yes.
Why a separate stabilization fund from that?
Okay, so you take the WIF. The WIF has its own separate statute that sets it up. And the money has to come from a certain place, and it goes into that account, and it's a separate account. And
That can't be expended, right, until it's
Right, but the problem is that account only is collecting maybe 500,000 a year, and our payments are going to be millions. So the WIF is one resource. And, you know, we needed a structure. How are you going to capture the short-term rental? If it's the policy of the selectmen to have short-term rental pay another portion of it, that needs to be captured. And under the, that Municipal Modernization Act, it provided the stabilization fund as a mechanism to do that. You could, as an alternate, try for some special legislation to set something up. But there's a mechanism that's available. And what we're trying to do is use the statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that have been established in order to set up these reserves to meet the needs. One is the WIF, and it's a separate one to do the stabilization. And then the district increment financing, district
I guess my question really is, why aren't we putting it all in the same place? Why did we choose the WIF and not the stabilization fund to begin with?
Well, because the WIF is a separate fund. And you don't have the authority to take the short-term rental and put it in the WIF. You have to put it where, you know, the state statute allows you to put it.
So we can't transfer from one to the other?
Correct, but you can use them both.
Okay.
And it may be that we get special legislation to consolidate them all and put them in one place.
It just makes sense that all of them in one stabilization fund would be easier to manage.
Right, and another thing that you could do is, you could eventually transfer money into the enterprise fund where it sits as retained earnings. But for now, I think the most important thing is to begin capturing these revenues because, you know, don't forget, the other part of the plan was that we're supposed to have $9 million saved up before we even start. Because the sum total of the revenues in the first several years is going to require a subsidy out of this fund. So it's important that we, you know, we've got about maybe 2.3 or something million, and this will help.
Well, I'm not sold on the 75% personally. I think that once you don't put the 100% in there, we'll never see it again. So that's just
Well, this is something that you have to decide. And so this is where, you know, that's why I think it's so valuable to see all of the information upfront, not just, you know, the 75 was picked because there's so much pressure on the levy budget, on getting the capital, getting everything back under there. It provides a small amount cushion for the general fund. If you want, you can take 100. The only thing that, so you know all the rules, you can't take less than 25. And I know you don't want to, but, so you can set that, 75 can be 100, can be 90, 80.
And that's one of the benefits of getting this early. We just started thinking about this, and maybe perhaps if the board thinks it's the thing to do, change that percentage.
Question. I understand the 75%, and I agree with Tracy. Do we need a set certain dollar amount to come out? Is this ultimately for debt service, or is this for construction, or both?
Ultimately, I would say primarily the debt service subsidy.
should it say 75% of X with a minimum of X?
You have to set it as a percentage. So we could look at
You couldn't put, you can't say
I don't think so.
You can't say I want 75 cents, or I need 75%, but it has to equal a minimum of 1,500,000 each year.
It may not though. I mean
No, no, I'm just using that as an example.
My understanding is you have to pick a percent. And what I would say is, we could look at the collections and set your percent, which can be changed. But you can't say, I'm pretty sure you can't say like 1.375 million or 25 or 75%, whichever is higher.
So you just made the argument that we could change that percentage annually?
It requires a town meeting, but yes, you can change it.
Okay. I would rather, personally, I'd rather go with a higher percentage. And then if we need it, we can come back and say, go down to 75%. It's always easier to go this way than that.
Yeah, we can have that discussion when we go through these in more depth, sure.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I'm not trying to
Oh, no, this is why we go through the detail on it.
Yeah, I mean, one of the objectives here is to identify the areas that you really want to prioritize, so to speak, in form of discussion, and really get into the meat of it, and do it, and do it on a more leisurely basis, so to speak, because we're not going to meet again until March. So it's going to be about three weeks before we meet again. So hopefully tonight, we can line up a couple of these areas that we want to put on the agenda for the next couple of meetings. I think that's the game plan, right?
Right, and again, the idea of having the detailed language is not to box you in, in any way, shape, or form. It's to give you the information that you need to make all of the choices in an informed way so that you really have the control over every little aspect of it. That's what we're going for. So that's Article Seventeen. And again, it's the Municipal Modernization Act on the wastewater. Article Eighteen would purport to have a local option act that amends the Tourism Revenue Preservation Fund by taking out the short-term rental that we're putting in the wastewater fund. Because it was set up in 2006 with the hotel motel, and that's the way it's been operating. But all of a sudden last year, you know, when they amended the short-term rental and added that, they added it to the hotel motel. So it's indistinguishable under the act. So right now, you've got both of them going into the tourism fund. And the idea would be that the tourism fund gets the share of the hotel motel, but the short-term rental goes into the wastewater. So that's all, that's what Article Eighteen does.
Have you talked to the Chamber on that at all?
To who?
Have you had any conversations with the Chamber or CEDC about that?
I met with the CEDC and discussed it with them. And I had indicated that, you know, they were the first ones, soon as it hit, you know, ink, it was a note in the folder, they were the first ones to see it. And I did indicate that they would be potentially on the list to meet with the Board of Selectmen at the next meeting to, you know, talk about the feasibility, visability of that. at the next meeting to, you know, talk about the feasibility, advisability of that. So yeah, the, they're briefed.
Okay.
So that's, that's Article eighteen. And Article nineteen is the funding of the Tourism Revenue Preservation Fund under that act. And, um, it's highlighted a little there. It's proposed at this juncture to be fully funded according to the act. There is that strange language that said, it, you know, the formula is fifty thousand dollars if appropriated or subject to appropriation. I think everything, it's all subject to appropriation, but that's in there. And as you can see with the, um, short-term ru- rental money, they're, they're boosting up this year to five hundred and sixty-seven thousand.
Why, why are we including the short-term rental this year?
Because it, it's part of the act.
There's no way to segregate that?
Dan, the, 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 the way it was, when they put the short-term rentals into it, they just put it into the, into the hotel and motel tax. So they didn't segregate it. So going back to that other article, it's so, it can be segregated in the future. So, so it'll, it'll come here.
That's what the idea is, is that, is that you could, you could give them less money than the act says, but, but that's sort of a violation of the act. So what we're trying to do is be methodical about it. Here's an article that amends the act to clarify moving forward what's going on with the short-term rental. But as for in the immediate time, we're putting the full amount in. So they would get that benefit this year, but not next year if we're successful with the whole picture.
But the state is recording, reporting to the town separate.
We do have it now.
Yeah.
And, and so we can, we can separate it right out. And, and we can, I can bring in the numbers when we discuss it and we'll show you all of them. And, and there's one more change that is sort of the first time we, we've done this too is, so the board asked that I send that, uh, statute off to town council and ask about the, um, who signs the contracts and what the procedures are. And he came back and, um, you know, the, the, the two parts of his opinion were that, number one, the Board of Selectmen can certainly delegate the authority to sign the contracts. And, you know, so, you know, my position is that if the board doesn't want to delegate it, then, then you sign the contracts. And so it's kind of, it's kind of clear, the, the selectmen determine that. So y'all have to determine that. The second piece is that, uh, town council felt that, uh, while the money goes automatically into the fund, it needs to be appropriated out by program. So listed here are, um, and, and CEDC is working on that. They'll have a recommendation by next week of how much they want to devote to each one of these programs, whether it's special events, marketing, public improvements, economic development. I don't think there'll be an unallocated amount, but, but those are the items that are listed in the statute. So town council would like them to establish, it's, it's kind of similar to the CPA, how much they're going to put in each. And then they'll be free, um, to make those allocations subject to the contract, which will have to be approved.
Right, I, I know, I know Kyle and, and the committee already does these allocations.
And what, what they determined, and they presented information to me and, you know, I'm more, you know, just a champion of the process and I want everything to be lawful and legal and, um, help them along. And, and they've had the ratios from the inception that are all within, you know, very tight tolerances. So, um, they can change their format to this without changing, I, I think that the way they allocate the money in any way. So it, it looks like it could work. But I think we want to talk to CEDC and, and make sure that everyone's comfortable and moving forward with all of it. And, but, but they're, they're well, just briefed on it all.
And, and usually, usually they do leave some money in unallocated just in case. Um, I, I know in, 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 in years, years past, the sand sculptures were, were not going to happen. And then they were going to happen. So we took the money out of unallocated to do the sand sculptures, you know, that kind of thing.
And that's why, you know, I, I was in favor of putting in an area where you can appropriate the money to, but, um, have some flexibility, at least with a small portion of it.
Again, my, my, my hope, I, I don't think CEDC is going to have a problem with a, any of this allocation and setup.
So the key is, is the discussion, I think, and the communication. I, I, I think everybody's sort of on the same game plan that, you know, we just need to, if, if there's changes in procedure or how it's going to be done, every, everybody needs to participate. And so that's Article nineteen. Article twenty is the, uh, district improvement financing. And Bill's done a great job developing that article up and he can give a full presentation to the board on, on how it's going to work. And, um, the, I guess, a couple of key points, the previous diff that was adopted at an earlier town meeting needs to be redone because some of the procedures weren't meticulously followed. It's very, you know, detailed statute in terms of what you need for mapping, property listing and all of that. And, and that's number one and number two. The proposal is to make the diff district the same as the phase one district. That way the money that's derived in the district can be spent in the district, not just a small portion of it. And, and I think that that would aid in the financing of the phase one. So, but that's something, it's, it's very detailed. And, um, I, I, I know just from Bill's brought me along on it. This is, I, I'm not a big diff guy, but, um, the information that we have on this, I, I think that you'll, you'll definitely appreciate, you know, a presentation on the diff and all the, the questions and things. So that's Article twenty. Article twenty-one, this is gets funner by that article. We received an, an article for establish a town seal review committee. And that was submitted by the Historic Commission.
Is that usually, that, we've never set up a committee by, by town meeting article? Is that required?
Uh, you know, I don't think it is by state law or anything, um, but they requested the article, so I put it on. I haven't done a thorough legal review of it and it's. It's an ad hoc, yeah, it's an ad hoc committee. So, but that's Article twenty-one. And so we'll have to have, I think, a lot of discussions on that. It was submitted and they were, that's what it looks like. Okay, that's twenty-one. Twenty-two, um, unfortunately we start to get run-of-the-mill again, but great projects, the CPA articles start. And twenty-two is their allotment of the resources. And then in twenty-three, they've got an affordable housing item on. Twenty-four, historic resource. And twenty-five is an open space. As you can see, it's pretty light this year on CPC projects. But they stand ready to discuss these with the board. And then we talked about twenty-six and twenty-seven, those are the zonings. And twenty-eight is the petition for the polystyrene reduction. Talked about that at your last meeting with the RASWAC committee. And then twenty-nine is the zoning petition for Berry. There that, um, I, I guess, the, the board will have a public hearing. They'll come back and see what the recommendation is.
I thought I saw something here about wetlands.
Yeah, the wetlands. We had a detailed, complete rewrite of the wetlands regulations.
Yeah.
That was initially submitted by the Conservation Department, but subsequently they sent me a note indicating that they had to withdraw it.
I'm looking at this thing like crazy because this doesn't match our, what we were given in our packet.
Yeah, well, you know, if, if, if they, if they submitted it, their, um, I think today they wanted to withdraw it, I, I figured.
Good.
The other thing Mark said, and, and I don't pass it on for any reason other than that he said it, is one of the other things the board might want to do is to decide what, if any of these articles, they want to push off to a, to a, to a special meeting. So I, I, I only convey that because that's one of the, uh, things he wanted me to let the board know. That in addition to, you know, working these articles, you could also make a decision as to are there any of these articles you wanted to defer?
On the, on the redoing the town seal, if that doesn't need to go to, go to, um, town meeting, I, I think that would save us. Not that we don't want to discuss any, anything at town meeting, but it's not going to cost us any money. So there's no money involved. Have the ad hoc committee come back and then, and then we could have the discussion on it, i- if, if it doesn't have to go to town meeting.
I just think we make a charge and let them do it. I thought we made that agreement. Ready?
We left it to the Board of, um, the Historical Commission to talk amongst themselves and decide whether they were going to make a recommendation to create a committee. And that seems to be what they're doing now.
Yeah, the, it, we, we got a fairly lengthy packet of, of.
Yeah, we did. I thought it had something in there about town meeting though. I, I thought we had some materials from an older town meeting talking about the seal. And that the thing, the thing generated out of a town meeting. The cut, the, the issue.
Well, ultimately it will go to town meeting, but I think that, I, I don't, I think we're all in agreement that if they want to move forward with it, we should create a charge in a committee and let them do their work and then bring the final recommendations to town meeting.
That makes sense. And we have plenty of time to make these decisions because we, we get in this early, so. All right. And now there's a seasonal population vote for the A B C C. Do you want to take that, Bob?
Yes, this is, um, another vote that the, the board is supposed to take every year, but.
Which I've never seen before either.
His.
Well, we did once.
Once?
Yeah, and it's important because it, uh, the state law for mostly under, you know, Mass General is chapter one thirty-eight, the liquor licenses, the section fifteen, which are the package stores. This doesn't impact the, um, on-premise consumption, but it, it sets what the quota is for package stores and seasonal package stores. And so all of the towns submit this annually. If you have a seasonal population fluctuation. And, um, in our case, uh, you know, it was called to my attention by the Executive Director of the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission as we discussed. There was a application for a, a seasonal package store. And we were investigating the, our, our quota from them said we can do zero of them. And, and, and I think that was the reason is that, um, we had failed in, um, recent years to file the appropriate paperwork, which is, this is their paperwork. So that's really the only process it's for is the A B C C. So what I, I did is I involved our town planner and the town clerk. And they did, uh, reasonable analysis of the, um, housing units and hotel rooms. And we came up with the estimate of sixty thousand. And so the idea would be the board would vote to approve the two thousand twenty-two seasonal population increase estimation form for the tiny armit at sixty thousand for the purpose of sending to the A B C C. And then, um, each five thousand of population increase enables you to have an additional seasonal license if you so, you know, desire to issue those.
So is the plan here to increase package stores in the town?
No, just the, the.
Maintain?
To allow the quota so that you, you have, you have, um, right now you couldn't issue one if you wanted because we're at the quota. And so this enables you to be able to take up, uh, um, a seasonal package store.
What does that look like seasonal? They take everything out?
Yeah, they, they are allowed to operate. The Board of Selectmen would have a, um, choice. They go either April one to November, or you can allow them to go April one to January, I think thirty-one. So.
I thought most of them were April one to November.
That's the old, and they, they extended it at one point to allow you that extra couple of months. And what that did was covered the holidays, but, um, that's, it's an option that the licensing authority has.
Yeah, and I think you got to ship all the alcohol back, don't you?
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to figure.
You had to clear it out.
Yeah, you do.
Do we have any seasonal? We don't have any seasonal ones now.
No, we don't have one. We had a, um, there's an applicant that has been working on an application. And, and so that's why, you know, we checked it, what, how's it work on the quota? And they said, you know, you have to have a seasonal population estimate.
Dennis had one. It seems artificially high.
Dennis's is sixty thousand.
Really?
I think that's a little artificially high. I think, no, ours is, ours is probably good. I think it's a lot more accurate than Dennis'.
Well, we have, uh, what'd you say, twenty-five thousand year-round people?
Yeah, I've got the census here.
Doubles in the summer gets you the fifty.
So are we doing this just to facilitate another license?
Twenty-five thousand oh two three, not a specific license, but, um, it's, it's a part of the A B C C process that how many licenses you're allowed to have is determined by the population, including seasonal. So, um, right now you're at, you're at your, your limit. And if you had a seasonal population increase that you documented, it would, um, allow your quota to go up a couple.
What was the number we used previously?
That was my, that was my question. Do you know what number we used previously?
It was around fifty. It was around fifty.
Do they not police these numbers to check their accuracy? If Dennis is doing sixty?
They, they said that it, it's, um, based on, um, and based on ascertainment of the facts and, and based on discussion. And, and so, um, that's what they, that's what they base it on. That's, and that's right in the, in the state law. Every single town in the Cape does it and has a seasonal population. I mean, you don't have to do it, but, um, it was called to my attention, so I brought it forward.
Yeah, so if, if we sign it, we don't have to approve any seasonal licenses because, because there are none. And the only see, I know there were some in Provincetown, but I don't think they exist anymore. But there was one at Northside Liquors, which was on one, one thirty-four and six A. And he would shut down every November. And, and I don't know whether he was able to ship it to the place on Station Avenue or whether he had to ship it all back. And I know the ones in Provincetown had to.
I don't think you can transport from store to store.
Yeah, um, I know the one in Provincetown, all the liquor got shipped back. When all went back to knife or wherever it came from.
Many years ago, I worked when I was younger in seasonal liquor stores. And that's what they did. They shut it down and everything went back, even the partial cases. And then in the spring you had to order it all back again. But that wasn't all bad because you weren't paying for all that stuff and having to carry it during the months that you were closed.
Right, so I, I make a motion to sign this form. Because I think it's just perfunctory.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? It carries unanimously. So now, um, brings us to Town Council Services, and that's going to be a quick item. When Mark informed me that he couldn't be here tonight, he asked that we put this over until we have a full board. It has been our practice in the past that when we hire for department heads in key positions like this, that we accommodate absent members and try to do it at a time where we have everybody here. So we're going to, uh, we're going to defer on this until we can get a full board, probably sometime next meeting or two. Right?
Do we need to make a motion on that or, or just?
Um, we don't have to, but you, you can, it's not going to hurt.
Because I, I was going to make a motion to, to put it off until Mark were back, right?
Wait a second. All those in favor? Aye, anyone oppose? Okay, so that formalizes it. Committee appointments. You have any appointments?
Yeah, there are, and a, and a resignation is. Yeah, there are, and a resignation as well. Also, Pam wanted me to ask, does the committee want the talent bank forms on the reappointments or just on the new folks?
Well, I tell you, I.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Some of these appointments, the talent bank forms that I were reading, it kind of dated some of the candidates where they were saying.
I saw Dick's.
Having two small kids and like one of those small kids, both of those small kids are adults.
1982.
Dick Neets has not aged since 1982.
Apparently not. Apparently not, according to that document, so. I don't know. I mean, I don't have any firm, you know, impressions either one way or the other. I would.
I mean, you definitely.
I would defer to the other board members on that.
Well, let's do the first one that's in order. Alice Bowen, been a longtime member of the Personnel Board, has to resign immediately. And she says, due to, apparently due to health reasons. So I make a recommendation to accept her resignation.
All right, I move that we accept her recommendation with gratitude.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention motion carries. And again, Ms. Bowen's been a very good member of the Personnel Committee. This was one that was here last week and from Ms. Doyle, which was missing the talent bank form previously. But again, it's a little dated, goes back to 2016. She is a full time resident. And the Committee did write a note recommending recommending her. All right, I move the appointment. Is there a second?
For one year through January 2023.
Yep. Is there a second? There's a motion and there's a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention motion carries. Some Board of Appeals reapprovals for Dick Neets, Mr. Campbell, Ms. Homer, and Mr. Kelly.
I will move those appointments.
Through January 2023.
And they're all for one year terms, right through January 2023?
Second.
There's a motion and there's a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, motion carries. That takes care of committee appointments. And I've asked Ms. Barnes to advertise for the Personnel Committee already. Replacement.
Okay. Upcoming agenda review. Now, on this, Bob, you were going to, I believe, make some recommendations as to placing some of these articles that were more meaty and worthy of further discussion. Dispersing them, perhaps some of them through the next couple of meetings.
Yes, let's take a look at March 1. I've got proposed that we meet with the C E D C. Now, the Historical Commission, we might not need to meet with them if we're going to postpone that article. But they're listed. And also the Community Preservation Committee. And I'm trying to think. Planning Boards taking care of, you met with RASWAC.
Well, we'll need to get Planning Board back after their public hearings.
After their public hearing.
On the petitioned article, yeah.
And then.
Especially.
One's on my list, too, is maybe if you want to talk to Recreation about the fund. Planning Board we need back. Like to have a presentation on the diff.
We have to have a public hearing, too, with capital budget and budget in school at some point, too.
Bob, Finance Committee seeing the school on the 16th. So this should be done before the first or the 15th, clearly.
I'm thinking the 15th might be great for those hearings with the school and the Finance Committee.
Yeah.
I think we have to look at the charter, right? I don't know what the requirement is for timing. I don't think it matters as long as it's before the.
I'm pretty sure it's when the Board of Selectmen like sets it.
Yep. Don't we have to advertise it, though? So.
Yes.
That's timing wise.
And I know there's going to be another meeting, but we actually go and go over the more and recommend and not recommend.
Yeah.
Would that be on the 15th or?
No, that's too early.
It's too.
No, that'll be at the end of.
29th. And then, and if you need the fifth, you could wrap up the warrant and execute it on the fifth. So you've got the March 1, March 15, March 29, April 5. We've got 1, 2, 3, 4 meetings.
Tentatively, the warrant would be on March 29.
Well, I mean, we can't have, we can't take possession of the articles till we hear, till we have everybody in, so.
Yeah, excellent.
We have to get them scheduled and have a public hearing first.
Do we have any other wastewater things that need to be taken care of at town meeting?
The diff and stabilization fund. Those are the two. So what do you think about the Historic Commission? Do you want to have them in or no? Have somebody else?
If we can go around it, if we can just appoint the committee, I don't see the need.
Maybe they don't know that's an option.
Right.
So.
I think we asked them to come back, but.
If they want to, I think our agreement was to have them look at it. So we can, maybe they can start working on a charge for us and we can start appointing people.
All right, then we'll. Maybe we can talk to them. And then we could, you want to talk to Recreation? On that revolving?
In my opinion, you gave us a good explanation.
I'm comfortable.
Tracy, what do you, you want to have them come in?
Well, it wasn't them that brought it forward. That's what my concern is. It was the Department of Revenue. So I just, you know, they don't need to come in, but I'd like to hear, maybe they could draft us a memo on their. I don't want to make a recommendation on it if it's something that they're not comfortable with.
No, they asked for it for sure.
They asked for it.
The Recreation has been asking for it very strenuously. And it so happens that, you know, working with the Department of Revenue has been suggesting that we do it for quite some time as well. I guess every other town does it. We're one of the last couple with the offset receipts. I think they've all been changed.
You're not supposed to transfer these offset receipt monies from one account to the other. Enough said. So with a revolving account, you can do that.
Okay. If the Board's comfortable with it, I just would like to make sure that they're on board with it. But if Bob says they are.
Don't you have to go and periodically increase the cap on those funds, too?
No, the.
On the offset receipt. I'm not talking about revolving account.
Offset receipt, you have to set it every year.
Yeah.
And it's based on a previous year's receipts. And the revolving fund's interesting because they've got the Parks and Recreation Revolving Fund, which is the 53D. Now, the way that is structured, it's the one we're doing, is that there's no cap on it. But if there's any money left over at the end of the year, anything over $10,000 has to be transferred back to the general fund. It's gone. They can only carry over 10,000. Now, other revolving funds, the general revolving funds that operate other departments, that's Mass General laws, Chapter 50, Section, no, 53E and a half, right? Chapter 44, 53E and a half. Now, on that one, that's the one where every year you have to vote what the limit in expenditures are. And if they collect more money and it doesn't transfer out, they save it. But every year you have to vote it, authorize it, set a cap. So for most things, you set the cap. But if there's any money left over, it stays in the revolving fund. And for the Parks and Recreation, you don't set the cap. But if there's money left over at the end of the year, it's. Interesting the way they do that. I don't know, like, they must be geniuses.
So what happens at the end with Parks and Recreation if there's money left over?
That if it's anything over $10,000.
Goes back in?
Goes back to the general fund.
Yeah.
Counts as just the general fund revenue.
I thought that's what you said, yeah. All right.
But they're so picky on how you do everything. But the Parks and Rec one, it's a very popular one. I think it's used in most towns. All right, I think I've got some good marching orders to set up a schedule that you guys can can look at that. We're going to get the Planning Board back. We're going to have the diff back. We're going to take a look at C E D C. Hopefully talk to Historic, get CPC in. I mentioned Recreation. We're going to get the Planning Board back. We're going to have a capital budget hearing, school hearing, and Finance Committee hearing.
And we need a chance also to go over the free cash detail at some point. I'd like to get into more detail with that, but that's just me. I'm one person. I think 133 for a Ford Ranger was.
Free cash makes good sense.
Amazing. Is that what a Ford Ranger costs? 133,000? I'm hoping there's like three of them there. You don't have to open it now, but if there's more than one, it'd be interesting.
Yeah, Ford Rangers don't cost 130.
That's how much it is listed for in our free cash. It says with a plow, but.
And a driver.
I was hoping.
A chauffeur.
Yeah, and the chauffeur with a hat.
I was hoping maybe the, huh?
Only a 350 if it's got a plow on it. So, you know, that's 70 anyway, and a plow.
Rangers are little guys.
Oh, it's a Ranger?
That's what it said.
Yeah, Ford Rangers, not their smallest, but it's.
Okay, is there anything else on the gender review that we have to talk about?
Yes, I have a potential date to reschedule the goal setting.
What's that?
February 26. Can anyone make February 26?
What is that, Saturday?
He suggested the 19th also, but I'm out of town that day.
Me, too.
The Saturday, the 26th go nine to one if people are available.
Let's give it a whirl.
All right, well.
February 26.
Should we schedule a snowstorm ahead of time?
And a hurricane.
It'll snow for sure.
Or salt and sand.
You said nine to one?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'll put it in my calendar for now.
I think that's it for the Black Pond, right?
Yes.
We'll be into another year.
Yes.
Individual items. We'll start with Dan. Do you have anything?
I do not.
Tracy?
No, thank you.
Peter?
For later agenda, two things. The police chief, so we can get that moving, you know, whatever we need to do. And also, the state has indicated that the tax receipts for marijuana have greatly exceeded the tax receipts from alcohol. So should we think about opening up a marijuana place in town?
I'm willing to have that conversation.
Well, it came up before.
No, there was a lot of opposition to it before.
Yeah, there was. You know, I wouldn't be opposed to looking at it again. I think that, you know, I don't think we wanted to be the first. And at the time, we would have been the first. But I think that we should involve or request the Planning, because the Planning Board.
Yeah.
Would be involved in something like that.
We're always looking for tax money.
Well.
Probably want to have the police involved with that, too, because there's always collateral issues that.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I think we also heard from the Substance Abuse Committee folks on that, too, didn't we?
Yeah, we did.
They were, they were gave a lot of input on it as well.
They're in next meeting. They're coming in next meeting.
Are they? Could raise it, we could fill them out.
Is there zoning bylaw for it right now?
There's not now.
It got voted down.
It was voted down, but.
Yeah, substance abuse, I see that now. I missed that the first time around. All right, anything else on? Individuals, so we go to consent agenda. We got St. Patrick's Day Parade, special liquor license for Scally's Irish Ale House, resolution and donations. So, Bob, you want to take that?
One late filed item. It's a, we need a $10 fee waiver for an indigenous burial.
$10?
But it's for a burial certificate. That's the normal fee, but there's nobody to pay it, so I've been.
Are you going to put that into consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
That would be added to the St. Patrick's Day Parade and a special liquor license for Scally's Irish Ale House for the St. Patrick's Day Parade on March 5. And then there's the memo from Mary Wagon requesting that the town administrator be approved to apply for the CBBG grant funds. And we've got donations for cemetery of Brenda Larkin, $300, Walter H. Gifford Trust, $25, and $10 fee waiver for burial certificate.
Move the consent agenda.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously.
You think he's keeping our quirk amendment list? Our fee waiver list? They keep.
The quirk amendment.
We had a fee waiver max.
We had, yeah, we we had this big controversy, a big debate about fee waivers and what did Jim Cork do? Put a limit.
A limit on it.
A $10,000, something like that, until we could work it out and resolve it, which we never did. So we called it the Quirk Amendment. And we used to keep a chart as to how many fees were waived at a given time.
Oh, we're up to 10 bucks.
I'm going to call Jim tomorrow.
Yeah, the written hour amendment. Anything over 10. All right. So now we move to the town administrator updates.
Okay, great, we covered the goals, so we don't need to do that again. Just a couple of items. I wanted to mention that the Board had requested there is a job posting for the fire chief. We pulled, there's the, we have a detailed job description. And I put together, and it's a little long. We could shorten it up a bit, but the ideal candidate profile. And I thought this is very interesting. Looked that over and, you know, I think it's, I think it's pretty good. The one thing I wanted to change is it says we're looking for a paramedic. The, one thing I wanted to change is it says we're looking for a paramedic in here somewhere, but it's like a paramedic or an EMT, it's the emergency medical services experience that's important, not, not being a paramedic.
So this draft that you presented here is, this, this is basically the same draft that we used in this, the job posting is the same as what we used in 2008?
Uh, it's been updated, I haven't actually looked, I asked Human Resources to update it, so I don't know what words changed, but it, it's based on the same job description, so it's essentially the same.
Do we look at any other communities? My, I guess my first question is, do we want to even have this discussion without Mark here?
I think we need to probably look at it a little closer, and I thought we were gonna review it and then come back and make suggestions.
Or if you want me to do some more research, get some information, I'm more than happy.
Well, you know, my thought on it is, too, is I think because we're gonna be embarking on what Peter's talking about as far as the, the police as well, perhaps some community input or maybe a staff survey of, of what would be important to them to see in a leader. It could very well all be covered in this, but it might not be, and I don't work in the fire services, so I'm not really sure, I just don't want to copy what we did the last time, I think that we should be really looking at what we need right now.
Well, this February 1 2022 document, this is all new, none of this we've ever had before, this is.
The profile.
The profile part is all new.
So how much does this play into the actual posting, or is this part of the criteria of what the decision is made on? How does, how does this?
Yeah, so the posting, you tie into them, it's the minimum requirements in the job description. So, so that's what's key there, and you know, the only thing I would say on the posting, if there's anything you might want to change, the education piece, there's not a lot of people that have National Fire Academy Executive Fire Operations Program or Mass. CFO 3 slash slash 4 certification, that's a pretty rigorous standard, I'd say you, you have two people in your department that have that. Probably one of them's the DEP, and the second one is a recently hired captain, you might want to say.
Preferred?
Preferred, or will, and have it like willing to get it, I, I just, you know, I, I, I would point out, it's a good standard, I, I'm not opposed to the standard, it's just a very strict, it's a good stand, very strict standard. And, and the rest of it, I, I think the posting is great, because, you know, those are the requirements, but when you evaluate the candidates, the, the idea is, is that you go through your, your profile, and then, you know, maybe you could mark off out of these, what, what's your 10 most important ones? I, I spent a lot of time sort of trying to think it through on what, you know, I, I thought you might need to help move the department forward, but it's just a straw man to help you sort of cement, you know, your own ideas.
Does our current chief have that, those certifications?
I think he does, yeah, I'm pretty sure he does.
Is that, is that a difficult thing to get while you're working as a chief?
Oh, no.
It's not?
I know, no, the, the thing is, is you're gonna participate in the professional development, and, and the way I've used this before, I love these standards, I really do. And, but there's no way I could find a candidate, you know, that, or enough candidates that possessed all of that, that stuff. So I, I said it, that it was preferred, and that, and that you had to be able to achieve it within a couple of years, and and a lot of it's the availability of the programs, they don't offer them once every week, you know, you, you gotta kind of wait a couple of years to get into them all, but this is the highest standard, this, so I like the standard, but it may not be required on day one.
So have you already made that change?
No.
No.
But, but that's the one change I'm, I'm contemplating on, on the posting part of it.
Right, you, you also talked about you're gonna get rid of the.
Under eight. Under, under candidate profile.
I'm looking at, I'm looking at job posting.
Okay.
Massachusetts EMF, what, what does that mean? Is that?
That's Emergency Medical Services.
So, so, okay, so, I'm sorry, I, I.
It's EMT, so.
It's EMT, excuse me.
Right, so, so what I would say is we geared, like, the minimum requirements is not that you're a paramedic, but you're an EMT or a paramedic and have some experience with emergency medical services, that's kind of the key, because, you know, we've got a very busy ambulance service.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
We need someone, but, but if you're limited to just paramedics, now, that's, that's really not, you know, not fair. Because, you know, sometimes the, the best supervisors, you know, might not be a paramedic, but they have a lot of experience in the EMS. I would say is, maybe if, if you want to take some more time to read the profile and suggest some edits and.
When, when would that have to be done by the meet-year timeline?
I'm, I'm thinking if you did it by next meeting, it'd probably be, okay, I, I want to also point out that I have a professional services agreement that I'd, I'd like to execute, this is for the Assessment Center. Now, they'd be ready to do this I, I, I think by May, June at the latest, so that's our timeframe, and that was, and, and that's actually, I was working with the chief on this, that's, he got a good timeframe because we thought it was gonna be six months out, and it's only a couple of months out, and the cost is in here, it's.
Yes, $9,500 bucks.
$9,500.
$3,450.
So.
Well, it's really $9.45, but that's a period, but.
You're right, you put $9. I'll take it out of my pocket right now.
Do you need a motion for that?
Yes.
I'd move two.
So.
Second.
There you go.
So you're saying May, June, and have you talked to the chief, then you'll obviously, he'll, you're either gonna have to appoint an interim, or he's gonna have to stay, if that's the case, so it's not gonna happen that fast.
Right, so I mean, my thought was to talk, talk to him, see if he'd want to stay, you know, he helped me set this up, he knows the timeframe, we're working together on it, and you know, I, I guess the idea is whether, whether he amends his timeframe a little bit, or then you go the acting room, and.
I'd say, see what he wants to do, if he's amenable to it and it's not a big deal, then he just stays and works with you.
Yeah, I was thinking, give him, give him the choice.
If not, then we do the acting, it shouldn't be.
Yeah, and I.
Very complicated.
I would say, like, I, I just out of respect for the gentleman, you know, that, that he is in everything that, that he's done, that, that, you know, we ask him if, is, does he want to stay on till we get through this, or, you know, we prefer if we did the acting, and I, I just, you know.
Yeah, I mean, you know, if, if he's got, you know, plans to travel to California or something this summer, and, you know, we wouldn't want to interfere with his plans, but, you know, if he's willing, that's, that would be great.
I wouldn't put any pressure on him whatsoever, and, but, but I, I think that that's one of the things when, you know, you work your way up through the ranks and you're a good chief and you, and you work hard, you know, you get to make make those suggestions and decisions, and, and, you know, and people take your word for it. So that's what I was thinking, if you guys wanted me, I would just ask him and see, see what his preference would be, and, and, you know, let that dictate whether, you know, he stays on.
Maybe we can deal with that at the next meeting when we deal with this stuff?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, so we're gonna, we're gonna put this fire, the job posting and the other fire chief things on for the next meeting. Anybody has any input, just send it to you in advance?
Yes, thank you.
And did we, did we vote on the professional service agreement? No, let's have a vote on that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. You go ahead and execute that contract for the stated consideration. $9 or whatever. Okay, do we have anything else in, in the, in the way of town administrator updates?
No, just I provide a report, which I want to keep doing, Bob and I started this, he actually started it, and I thought it was just a great idea, any, any contracts that we do that are over 10,000, I keep this running list, and I want to keep you guys in the loop, updated. We are meticulous about competitive procurement on every one of these contracts, and I just want to make sure you guys know everything, and so if you go through them, if there's questions you have about, about any of them, you know, let me know, and there, you know, all projects that have been through, you know, through the mill, there's nothing new. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Do we have a motion adjourned?
Some of.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Bob, thank you, Bill.
Thank you.